All right, so let me double check here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. All right. It is 5:01, and I'll call this committee of the whole meeting of the Lansing City Council to order, and ask that our clerk, Sheri, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spatafor?
Uh, present.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Betts?
Here.
There is a quorum of eight.
Thank you very much. With the quorum, I'd ask that the Vice President please move the minutes from September 14th.
Sure, I would move the ministers presented.
Motion's been made, is there discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley? I'll come back.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Minutes? Yes.
Motion carries 8-0.
Very good. All right, so we are at the point of our meeting where we have public comment. We have a lot of folks on this evening, so if you could keep your comments to the items on this agenda, we'd greatly appreciate it. You know, there is an opportunity at City Council for open-ended comments, and we fully respect that, but tonight, for the committee of the whole meeting, please keep it to our agenda items. And those are a presentation on the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club, a public hearing on the LEDC Downtown Lansing Riverfront project related to the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club, the lease agreement for the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club, our fiscal year '22 budget priorities, and the ordinance amending the property tax exemption guidelines. So we'd appreciate that if you'd keep your three minutes to that. Again, to participate in a public comment, please raise your hand, and you do that with... On your computer, if you have a Mac, it is Option-Y. If you have a PC, it's Alt-Y. If you're calling in from a phone, it is Star 9. If you're on a touchscreen device, it is not what I just listed. There is a raise-hand function generally found in your menus or the participants' screens, so use that. And for the purposes of this evening, we will keep the public comment open until the second speaker concludes, or the first speaker, whichever happens if there is no second speaker. So the first one I saw disappeared, so we will start with Malina Brand. And let me just elevate you to speak. Malina Brand, you have three minutes.
Yay, hello. Happy Monday, everyone. I'm here to show support of Councilmember Betts' budget priority to reallocate 10% of the police budget. You guys have heard many, many times over the past few months about why we should do that, and why the time is now, so I'm just here to reinforce those things. And I actually just saw today that Philadelphia passed their resolution to reallocate $14 million from their police budget into a variety of different services, including affordable housing. So I want you guys to know that this isn't unprecedented. This is something that's happening across the country. And recently, I actually had a woman come into the nonprofit that I run who was in crisis, and thankfully, we were able to de-escalate her. But she was very, very worried that she wasn't going to be able to calm herself down, and that she would have to interact with the police, and that it would go in a negative direction. So these people are out there, these people live in Lansing. We are helping these people now, and services like my nonprofit need extra support to actually help these people, and this would be a great way. Again, I'm voicing support for Councilmember Betts' what's it called? Budget priority to reallocate 10%. Thank you, guys, for being here and doing the work that you're doing. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Malina Brand. As a reminder, at the conclusion of the next speaker, we will close out public comment, and our next speaker is Katie Fornier. Or Fornay, possibly.
Hello.
There you are. Hello.
Okay, great, thank you. So I'm here today to speak on the 2021 fiscal year budget priorities. Just echoing the last speaker, we really want this budget to produce positive and quantifiable changes for the community. And that includes substantial reinvestment and defunding of the police, which includes services for mental health, recidivism programs, education, job placement, and drug treatment programs. Those are the priorities that, time and time again, members of this community have prioritized for themselves, and continue to ask you to support. Superficial gestures to offer training programs for police members to de-escalate situations isn't enough. We need ways to support the programs and the communities that need them, and that includes financial support. Thank you for your time, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. And we are closing public comment now, so we have up next is Rachel Diskin. Rachel Diskin, you are now... You have the ability to speak.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me here today, and happy Monday. I am also here to speak on the 2021 budget priorities. I support Councilmember Betts and Dunbar's priority to reallocate 10% of the police budget to community services. I just wanted to remind everyone that the city, the county, and the state have all declared racism a public health crisis. To me, that's a pretty big deal. If not supporting this proposal to reallocate 10% of the police budget, what are we doing as a city to address that? So, you know, that's kind of where I'm coming from on this, is that we really need to take a step. Just saying that racism is a public health crisis and not doing anything about it is not what Lansing is for. We are a community that can do better and that will do better for our citizens. So with that, I cede my time, I just wanted to make sure, you know, I support that.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Tobias Webb. Tobias Webb, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I also want to support Betts' proposal to start reducing the police budget in a meaningful way. As the last speaker just said, this is largely about systemic racism. And we should be putting Lansing's tax dollars towards institutions that are helping with those issues and not harming them, as the police are. Other than that, I just want to say that, you know, if we don't see meaningful change, we're just gonna have to see more and more protests in the streets until we do. The people of Lansing are prepared to do that. If you guys aren't prepared to make that meaningful change with this budget. And with that, I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Tashmika Torak, and let me... Tashmika Torak, you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you so much. I obviously am in support of the budget proposal as a priority to defund the police by 10%. I also want to just remind everyone here that the goal is 50% over the course of five years, and this would be a really important step to start that process. I also just want to share that, as someone who works with youth in the city of Lansing, that this is an intergenerational change, a change that would have an impact on families over the course of generations. And so I want to invite the City Council to think about what kind of impact would come from making sure that families have access to the resources they need to be healthy and whole, rather than having a police force that is constantly, over a period of time, harming families and separating them from one another. I think that this would be a way for our community to be healthy for the future. And as a member of City Council, I would imagine that your goal would be the benefit of the children in this community. And so I support this fully. I think it would have a major impact on the way that our youth live and function, and I want you to be a part of making that happen. And as a member of the city, someone who lives here, I would be profoundly grateful to see you leading that change. So with that, I cede my time. The only thing I'll say is that you can contact me, I know you've seen my emails, so feel free to call me if you have any questions or want to talk about any of the defund the police things. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see here. The next speaker is April Elizabeth Pooley, followed by Nathan... Nope, followed by Mike Lynn. April Elizabeth Pooley, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name's April, and I'm a Lansing resident. I'm just here to voice my support for the budget priority of reducing the Lansing City Police Budget by 10% next fiscal year, and allocating that money towards youth education and employment programming. And I specifically wanted to stress the importance of defunding the police budget and not just funneling new money from elsewhere to pay for these community development initiatives, because what I want to see in my community is a police force with less power. And less police funding equals less police power, and that's what the Lansing community needs, to be safe and to grow, and I'm here for that. So thank you to Councilmember Betts for proposing these priorities, and with that, I yield my time.
Thank you very much. We have up next is Mike Lynn, followed by our final speaker, Nathan Jemson. So, Mike Lynn, you are able to speak? Yes, there you go.
Thank you very much. We're on one computer right now, and Erica Lynn would like to speak also, but I couldn't raise, obviously couldn't raise my hand twice, if that's a possibility after I get done. But thank you all for being here and considering this, brought through by Brandon Betts and Kathy Dunbar. Obviously, I do agree with both on bringing this resolution to the table. Everybody keeps stating the public health crisis on racism, we all understand that that's a fact. And what are we gonna do about it, is the question. So I do want to say that I really, truly, honestly believe that in Michigan, as well as the city of Lansing, we have some of the most progressive lawmakers and people sitting in these chairs, you guys included, for the most part. And, you know, as Tashmika said, this is your guys' chance to do something great. I don't know who it is that would tell anything different than that. I mean, the people are asking for this, we're asking for something different. Today, I walked up to my community center on the corner of Holmes and MLK and found a spent bullet in my parking lot. You know, this is something we all know is an issue here. Whether or not police can stop these type of things has always been the question. I have the answer, I know for a fact they can't. In my early childhood, I was a person who committed crimes. Police couldn't stop that. They couldn't have told me when I was sitting on my couch figuring out whether or not I was gonna do something bad, you know, "Don't do that, this is a minority report." So we have to think outside the box, and this is a perfect group to get that done, in my opinion, for the most part, aside from maybe two of you on here, and that's not council. I think our council is in a position to do this. I just recently got word that LPD officer that punched the lily girl, I just recently had her grievance taken back and wasn't actually charged for that time she was put off, which was disgusting. We all were very upset that she only got two days off, I think it was, without pay, and to have the union come back behind that and make her whole, that was quite ridiculous. And this is the type of thing that we're talking about, there's no accountability. One thing, we're talking about community service and community people being involved in policing more, is the killing that happened two days after George Floyd died. I mean, this guy, his mother, I think it was, or his grandmother called to have him, you know, the police come out to check on him because he was in a crisis, and an hour and a half later, he ended up dead. This is a perfect example of something that happened right here in Lansing, so we can't continue to say we don't have these problems. Lansing is amazing. I mean, it just really is. I've done multiple interviews on this question alone, because people ask, you know, "You have so much bad stuff to say," and it's not that. You know, it's almost like a parent that's trying to get their son or their daughter to be 100% instead of telling them that 50% is okay. Lansing is an amazing place to live, it's amazing people in this city. Look at our council, every different ethnic background, every different creed, color, everything. We're just an amazing place, and we have a time and a chance to do something really amazing. Please, 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 take heed to Brandon and Kathy Dunbar's proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Lynn, we will allow Erica Lynn three minutes.
Erica.
Hello all, Erica Lynn, Lansing, Michigan, lifelong resident. I would like to voice my support for Councilmember Betts' budget priority to reallocate 10% of the LPT budget and reallocating to hiring of more social workers, which I would like to make clear should be separate from LPD. I would also like to support the reinvestment in city programs that are focused on youth education and reinvesting in city programs. Racism has been declared a public health emergency. Lansing is not immune to it by any means. I refer to everything that my husband Mike just spoke about. We are not immune, and this priority, these priorities that are being presented are very reasonable. They are meaningful, and our community resources are right now, and have been operating at a financial deficit for a very long time now. The time to change that is now, and I hope that, no, I implore the council to take this into serious consideration with the mindset of reimagining the police budget, not trying to fit true change into the existing one, because that will not happen. You all have an opportunity to truly transform Lansing. We are so close, we are this close to reaching our potential to be wonderful for all of us, and as you're hearing tonight, many of your constituents are urging you to take that. Thank you, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Our final speaker will be Nathan Jemson. Oh, I gotta do something, hold on, there you go. Sorry, Nathan. Nathan, you have three minutes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, City Councilmembers. I also am here to support all the previous speakers that are in support of the 10% reduction in the Lansing Police Department budget, and urge you to adopt the proposal by Councilmember Betts and Dunbar to reduce the budget for next year into 2021 by 10%, and furthermore, later to 50% as well. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, we have three more speakers that raised their hands since I called time, but before I let Ms. Lynn speak, is there objection to allowing the last three speakers to speak? Seeing none, the next speaker is Daniel Long Hoffman, followed by Melissa DiMello, and the final speaker will be Laura Drotar.
Hi, I guess I'd like to start then by thanking you all for letting us speak. I really appreciate you all increasing participation in these meetings, making them accessible. And I'd like to reiterate my support for all the previous speakers and for the Betts-Dunbar resolution to defund the lease and to reduce the police budget by 10% and reallocate the resources into investing into the community. I think that it's a small first step, but it's a necessary one. And like the other speakers, I think that this is just the beginning of what could be a real reimagining of what public safety looks like in Lansing, and instead of a negative view, looking at really a positive view of how we can really support everyone in our community. So once again, I'd like to reiterate my support to defunding the police, reducing their budget, and taking that money to reinvest in our community, to invest not just in social workers, but other community organizations. Thank you very much, I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Melissa DiMello, and then our final speaker is Laura Drotar. Melissa DiMello?
Hi, my name's Melissa DiMello. I support the budget priority to reallocate finances from the police to our community. The budget priority is a good start, but it's literally just a start. 10% is good, but we can do better. I fully believe, as research has shown, that the increase in community resources and budget decreases crime and decreases police presence in our communities. 10% isn't the goal, but it is definitely a start. And in order to see progress in our community, and in our community, we need more resources, which I'm glad to see this 10%, and I look forward to seeing more increased community resources and community budget. I yield my time.
Thank you, Melissa, very much. The next one is, and final speaker, Laura Drotar. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Laura. Just quickly, I just wanted to show my support for the initiative to reduce the police budget by 10%. And also, like many others said, supporting, or hoping that, you know, with this being a start and with wanting to reduce that budget by more and more. And I think funding social workers and social services is wonderful. And just many things make me proud to be living in Lansing, and I think that we could be like a great example for many other cities to be making this initiative. And it would just be another reason I'm so proud to be here and continue to be part of this community. And so that's all I have to say, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes those registered for public comment. Would the folks that, if there's anybody who is a panelist for this evening who will be presenting on any of the items on the agenda, please raise your hand if you're in the... In the attendee list, but maybe I haven't made you a panelist yet, I don't recognize all the names over here. Just raise your hand if it gets to you and we need you. All right, so our first presentation this evening is presentation on the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club LLC. We are setting a public hearing on some of the components of this deal this evening. That doesn't mean we're approving anything this evening beyond setting the public hearing, but thought it'd be useful to have folks come in and share with you the vision and all that stuff that they've been presenting to other groups around the city. So I'm gonna turn it over to, it looks like, hold on, before I do that, Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, Mr. President, just a question. I'm a bit confused on what we will be setting a public hearing for.
Well, so it's...
Is this for the lease? Is this for the LBRA loan? What exactly is it for?
Mr. McGrane, can you answer that question? Or Samantha Harkins, or Jim Smirka? If one of you could address that directly, that would be ideal. If not, I will reopen the resolution and see what we're doing. Not everyone all at once. Brian, it looks like you're up.
Well, I was gonna say, I was gonna defer to my higher up, so Samantha, if you wanted to...
It's the LBRA issue, but if you guys want to clarify.
It is, Jim, can you clarify that? I think you were just talking and you were on mute. Mr. Smirka? There you go, you were just talking.
Greg, can you handle that one? It should be for the LBRA, because this is just a lease agreement that the city is approving here. But the LBRA is funding some of the eligible activities.
Right, so we'll get through all the presentation, but so the LBRA is the fund that we have to approve, and that needs a public hearing. The lease is approved by council, because it's longer than five years, but that does not need a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Cool. All right. Councilmember Betts, are you satisfied with that?
Thank you very much.
Very good. By all the lawyers, okay. Brian, you're up.
All right, well, thank you for the floor, Mr. President, and good evening, Councilmembers. Thank you for having us here. I'm just gonna be brief, I'm very excited to introduce to you the team from Detroit Rising Development. We began conversations with this team several months ago, after paying visits to their flagship property in Midtown Detroit, the Detroit Shipping Company. What they have going on there is just plain extraordinary. From the ground up, they've created an amazing facility there. Though the structure itself is kind of cool, what is really equally impressive to us is the nature of the business they've created inside. I invite you to picture a food court, an entertainment space, a gallery space, a community space, a public space, all rolled up into one. When I've been there now in person, I've just been so impressed by how everything blends together in an authentic, diverse mix of people, activity, and energy. What we have seen there is what we know they will bring to our community, but with a uniquely Lansing spin. Let me introduce to you John Hartzell, General Partner, and Kirsty Hardy, who I believe is joining him, their Development Project Manager, and both of whom are gonna get into the details of what is being conceived for our city market space. So I believe they're both there, and I'd love for them to take things away.
Brian, I see John, who was the second person? Kirsty, hold on just a second, let me...
Kirsty Hardy.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so what I will ask folks to do, since we're gonna have questions, I'm sure... Again, being on Zoom, it's not really easy for me to see if everyone has a question during a presentation. So I've asked the folks that are presenting to plan for about 15 to 20 minutes of presentation, and then if you could hold your questions to the end, that would be ideal. If it's super pertinent, I suppose, maybe raise your hand, and if I notice it, we'll get to you, but just know that that's the plan, is we'll take them at the end. Thank you, go ahead.
Hey, good evening. Sorry about that. John and I are in the office together. Now we're good. My name is Kirsty Hardy, I'm a Development Project Manager here at Detroit Rising, and I'm trying to figure out how to share, there we go, hi. I'm here with John Hartzell. John is the founder of Detroit Rising, and he's our Director of Development. And the shipping company project that Brian alluded to is really his brainchild and is serving as the sort of inspiration for what we want to do in Lansing. So we have been negotiating a lease with the staff to lease the city market site. And what we want to bring there is this great collective of, as Brian was alluding to, public space with food court, event space, somewhere for all residents of Lansing and visitors that come to Lansing to spend time and enjoy. And I do have a presentation I'd like to share.
Yeah, but you should be allowed now. Go ahead. There we go.
Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay, so our vision for this space is the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club. Again, what we want to bring is sort of something that's a mix, gathering space, something that offers different food options, engaging programming, which is where the shuffleboard concept comes into play, although that's really just one aspect. It's not by any means the focus of what we want to bring to the city market space. We want something that's going to be vibrant, something that embraces the indoor and outdoor space. We are Detroit-based, and this would be our first sort of branch out of the Detroit metropolitan area. Part of what we really loved about Lansing and about this location in particular is all the reinvestment that we've seen along the riverfront and the proximity to the Lansing Center, to the baseball field, Lugnut Stadium, the Riverwalk, the museums that are in this area. And we want to expand on that. We want to make sure that, you know, what we accomplish at this site really embraces all of our new neighbors and brings something that is all Lansing. We're definitely not going to be kind of copying and pasting what is the Detroit Shipping Company in Lansing. We want it to feel like Lansing. So again, we're Detroit Rising Development, we are Detroit-based, we are a real estate development and construction management company, and we also have a sort of sister company, which is DSC Hospitality, which was born from the success of the Detroit Shipping Company, it's the operations arm. So DRD would be the entity that is overseeing the development of the space and the construction, because we do plan to add on, which I'll get to in a moment. But DSC Hospitality would be the entity that is responsible for operating sort of day-to-day management and happenings at the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club. So I've included here, this is a rendering of the Detroit Shipping Company, for those of you who haven't been to the space. So the planning for this project occurred in 2017. It finally opened in 2018, and this is an actual picture of what was built there, just to show that the company builds what we say we're going to build. And again, what we see for the Lansing City Market Site is to transform it into something that is multipurpose, that gives something for everyone, so something that can be offered to local residents, to young families, to young couples, to folks working in the large office buildings across the street, to visitors to Lansing, sort of offer something for everyone with some really engaging and different programming, so it's not the same experience. So it's not the same experience every time you come. And again, just to sort of distinguish what we are and what we are not, we are, we're not a concert hall, we're not a dive bar, we're not a dance club. We want to be something that is embracing to, to all people in Lansing, and again, visitors. So something that's, that feels inclusive, something that is active at, at all hours of the day and into some of the evening hours. So we want to be drawing people in for the lunch crowd, draw people in after work for happy hour, draw families in on the weekends, maybe after a Lugnuts game or after a concert, something that's just a fun gathering place that offers something different every time you come. So we plan to have, and we're still working through, you know, the, the exact programming, so bear with us, but we envision a place that has six to seven different food truck-style eateries with a bar, an art gallery, private space that can be sectioned off for private events or parties, shuffleboard courts, of course, because we're talking about calling this the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club, a small stage for music events or other live events. And of course, the patio, again, what we really love about this space is all the investment in the riverfront and Rotary Park. And we want our build-out of the former Lansing City Market to feel like an extension of that. So of course, we will be making some improvements to what is currently the patio space at the site. This again is a rendering for the Detroit Shipping Company project, and then a photo of what it looks like now. This is the outdoor space with the stage. So just to touch on the shuffleboard concept again, we will have, we're hoping to have both indoor and outdoor full-size shuffleboard courts, just to add another level of interest to this space. At Detroit Shipping Company, there's a full volleyball court out back, and it just adds another, you know, aspect of interest. It acts to draw people in on normally slow days of the week and helps attract that happy hour crowd too, that we're looking to secure from, from all the office space that is in Lansing. These courts would be open to the public during the weekends, which is important to note. This here is a preliminary floor plan. So this is the first floor. We're looking to put in, as I said, five to seven different restaurant spaces. So these would be little micro units that were, are leased by individual tenants. They would all share what's noted here, the commissary in the northeast corner would be like the shared back of house with the dish room and kitchen. Then there'd be shared space with the communal tables and the bar space. And then what we're hoping to build out on the second floor is sort of a mezzanine level with another smaller bar and the shuffleboard courts, which would look out below onto all the activity that's happening on the first floor. And these are just some inspiration photos. Again, we're kind of early in the design phase, but this is sort of the atmosphere that we're going for. There's a somewhat similar project called the London Shuffle Club, which again incorporates, you know, food, drink, and shuffleboard, of course. For the outdoor patio, we've envisioned putting a, another food vendor out there, whether that's in a food truck that's parked on the site at all times, or perhaps it's a shipping container that we, you know, sort of make adjustments to, to operate a food and beverage concept out of. And again, of course, taking advantage of that great riverfront property and the patio. So I guess I'll stop there. I feel like I've been talking a while. So if you have any questions, we're here. John probably will fill in some gaps where I missed something.
Thank you very much for that. Kirsty, is that right?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
Kirsty or Kirsty?
Kirsty.
Kirsty, I'm sorry about that. Okay. I have a few folks with their hands raised up. John, do you want to add anything before we move on to questions?
Um. Sorry.
Well, now you got on mute, though.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I figured I would respond through a question. You know, a lot about, about what shipping company is and what Lansing Social Club will be, it's about spheres of influence. It's, it's the reason why we like micro retail, micro food vendors, and having multiple points of interest. Each group comes in and collectively, we're drawn from our own diverse backgrounds. So if you ever come to a shipping company, you'll see that we represent the community around us, you know, and we, we look to find diversity in the vendors we choose. I think we took about 120 applications and did about 50 food tastings, and it took us a long time to come up and curate the correct grouping and, and mix of our tenants. And it's intentional, what we do, and we'll do the same thing in Lansing. Lansing, we're, we're planning on maybe bringing one or two of our Detroit-based groups, but then we're looking for four to five food vendors that are either local or in the surrounding area, you know, drawing from different communities and again, different backgrounds to represent the community.
Thank you. Brian, I see questions, but did you want to say something in between before we started? Questions?
Yes, if I may, just to set some additional context. One, I did want to let everybody know that the public hearing is, is for the LEDC project plan. And I wanted to let folks know too, that both Chris and Carl from LEAP, who've been very involved in this project, are on the call tonight as well to handle questions, as is Greg Venker. So if it comes down to any of the, the lease work that we've done, the, the technical pieces, please, any of those questions can be directed to us as well.
Thanks, Brian. And Jim's waving his hand frantically.
Frantically, I couldn't find my name.
Oh, okay, got it.
I want to supplement that, an answer to that question on the public hearing. Yes, the public hearing is, is being held on the financing plan. There will be a public hearing set on the lease-
Okay.
-after it sits for 30 days. Now, you are not going to find that in any charter or ordinance for the transfer of real estate, but it's been the advice of the city attorney's office for a long time that if a lease is over five years, it should sit for 30 days on file with the clerk and also have a public hearing, just because it's close to a really, like a disposition of property. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. I apologize for my misstatement earlier. Okay, we have a number of council members with some questions, so I'm gonna get that ball rolling. And first up is the Honorable Patricia Spitzley. But we'll go with Pat tonight.
Thank you. I'm in a Pat mood. It's all good. Um, thank you, Mr. President. So I have a couple of questions. First, the question is, what's the location of the Detroit site right now?
The address is 474 Peterborough in Midtown Detroit. It's kind of a old Cass Corridor. Kind of a fight right now as to what the title of the neighborhood's going to be. Midtown's trying to capture it, but the Ilitches are trying to capture it part of Cass Park Neighborhood.
Yeah, I know. I'm familiar. Thank you. Um. Have any members of the administration visited your site?
Are you asking me or the administration?
I, whoever wants to say yes.
Brian, why don't you go ahead and take that one?
Uh, yes, Madam Counselor, and I was there earlier this year. Actually, I believe it was December, in fact. I believe the mayor has been there. I believe Samantha, you've been there as well. So a number of us have been on site to see it.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Patricia, hold on, you've frozen. Hold on just a second.
You said-
I think you're better now. Maybe it was just my computer. I apologize, but now, go ahead, Patricia.
I'm doing my matrix thing. Maybe you didn't catch it.
There's a glitch.
Um. So, um, let's see. I'm sorry. How long is the lease again?
It's a 10-year lease.
Thank you. Um, I just have two more questions. Have you-
Jim, am I wrong? Is it not 10 years? Jim's shaking his head.
No, it's, it's going to be 40 years.
Four zero?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, under pressure, it was 10. Forty. Okay, I apologize. Wow, I did not know that.
Four zero?
Yes.
I gotta write that down. All righty. Um, have, have you entered into any type of contracts with food vendors or letters of intent?
Not currently. It's too long and too far out for that to happen.
So if it's too long and too far out, what date are we talking here then, that you anticipate getting this done?
I'm sorry, which part? The leasing part or the open date of the facility?
The open date of the facility.
So our anticipation is, we would dream for a fall '21. Reality with COVID and uncertainty of the times, spring of '22.
Okay. Um, all right. And then, um, Kirsty mentioned that, um, she mentioned happy hour, so that implies liquor license. Are you guys, I, I don't know, the, does, does the, um, does the market come with a liquor license, or would they have to seek out a liquor license?
We have to purchase one.
Right. And then the last question, um, Kirsty also remember, also mentioned, um, you have these different vendors in these type of sections. Are they gonna have a shared kitchen, or are they gonna have their own kitchen?
So we'll do a, a commissary, but just for prep and storage. And inside their kitchens, they'll have their own systems.
Okay.
The Detroit Shipping Company, they're, they're a little smaller. They're, they're all in a container, so they all use 160 square feet. And, you know, their, their operations, we have five main food vendors and one dessert and coffee vendor. And their annual sales were between 400,000 and 1 million per, per stall. And they all run them in, in different levels, right? One, one kitchen has two employees, their kitchen has six employees, and it just depends on how you want to run your business.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Next up is Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Wood, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Spitzer. I have a series of questions. My, my first one is to the administration. Sometime back, the administration was doing an RFP on the city market. Can you tell us how many people responded on to that RFP? And can we get copies of those responses?
Ms. Harkins?
Actually, Brian was lead on that, so I'm gonna kick it to Brian. Yeah, he was managing the RFP.
Mr. McGrane?
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to share all those with you. The, the reality is, we had a couple that were complete. They probably were not entirely viable. We did have a, a couple of letters, emails of interest, but certainly nothing that was a full proposal. But I'm happy to share with you everything that we would have received that we would have considered complete.
Okay, I'd like to see those. Did Detroit Rising fill out an RFP, or did you seek them out?
Detroit Rising, we, it was a combination of seeking them out and then putting together materials in response.
Um, for Detroit Rising, based on COVID, I'd like to understand your market analysis from when you opened to the pandemic that we're in right now and how that's affected sales and your operations.
Um, yeah, each month has been different, obviously, right? So you just throw away April and May. June, we opened up halfway through with curbside. Not really our business model. We weren't set up that way. So we had two out of five vendors doing curbside. Again, again, unqualified against our business model in other years. Then July, halfway through, we ended up opening, moving all our seats and building an outdoor oasis, that we call it, in our back 10,000 square foot parking lot. And so we, at capacity, I think we have 575-person capacity. But through COVID, we can only program about 210 seats. So we have a Friday and Saturday over our wait. People are reserving, trying to get in. So we're, we're, we're seeing that people want to be out in, in, in there. We just can't hit capacity. So there's been severe shortfall on the cash flow. Good news is, I didn't come out of my pocket, so that was exciting.
Okay, what, what is the downturn in your revenue? Can you give me a projection? Is it a third? Is it half? Is it?
Again, each month is different. So, I mean, if, if you're just saying, you know, picking a month, I could say there was zero revenue for a couple of months. Then there was different business model completely in June. Half of July wasn't open until that. August was our first open and, and, and at its capacity now. So I'd say 40% for August. And then September, we're actually upticking, where we're outperforming August by about 20% each week.
Okay. And looking at the project plan, the information on page four, it talks about the riverfront and Rotary Park, that that will be part of the lease agreement. Is that correct?
Our, our upper patio will be part of the lease agreement, but when you have two patios and a riverfront combined like that, you're gonna intertwine and, and connect. And, you know, you know, we've been working and talking with a lot of community groups about doing cross-promotional events and working together.
That doesn't answer my question. To the administration, are these parks, are the Riverfront Park, a portion of Riverfront Park and Rotary Park, part of the lease agreement?
I would, I would ask Greg, if I may, to speak to that portion of the lease. Greg, are you there?
Greg, I think the portion that Councilmember Wood is referencing says, "The Riverfront Park and Rotary Park currently service improved public park property. No use beyond public park property is contemplated for this space." Well, now your sound's not working, Greg. Chris, are you gonna say something while we wait for Greg? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, President Spitzer. Yeah, I believe that's part of the project plan in which, due to the, the parcel boundaries, those are included within the project plan, but the only improvements are contemplated for the building site. Within the lease, Greg can speak to that, but I believe that's just the building site. And there is a definition of what that encompasses. And I believe that same legal description is further down within the project plan.
Okay, thank you. Then on page-
Carol, you muted yourself.
Sorry about that. Then on page five, when it talks about the loan, is it my understanding that we're looking at a loan from the Brownfield and LEAP for 400, combined $465,000? Is that correct, or is there, or isn't more than that?
Chris, that's my understanding. You've got the financials on this one, so you go ahead.
Correct. So that, that's, that's what the request is. The, the project plan itself is just for the EDC portion, which is $65,000. And then the $400,000 is what the anticipated request will be to the Brownfield Authority Board, and which will be to them to approve.
We have done two loans for restaurant downtown. One was for Capital View, which my understanding was, did not get paid off completely. And the other was for Tropos. Is that correct?
I believe so. I think if Carl could probably speak to, um, maybe the outcomes of those, but I, I believe that is correct.
Carl can speak to that.
Go ahead, Carl.
Yeah, there was, the EDC has made quite a few loans over the last 20 years, probably 15 loans. And the ones you're referring to, one was, there was a restaurant called The Majority that was in the Capital View Building on first floor. And then the, I'm sorry, the other one was Tropo?
Yes.
And your question was-
Were those fully, fully paid back?
Yeah, they were. Well, there was a letter of credit on one. So in terms of recovering the funds, I think Majority, there was a letter of credit that Mr. Boji had that we recovered those funds. And then there was also- And then there was also a letter of credit on the Tropo too, so we were able to recover our funds. In this particular case, the EDC loan would be, I believe, to purchase a liquor license, and the liquor license will serve as collateral.
Okay. And then looking at the lease agreement, um, I'd like to know what, um, if we could get an analysis of what the rental rate would be, um, in a commercial setting, um, for the proposal that they're looking at. When we look at the square footage and that, I'd like to know what the commercial rental rate is if this were a market, um, done on the open market. Can someone get me that information? Yes, no, maybe?
Well, let, let, let our team look into that, Carol.
Right, thank you. I, I'm sure that you could go to Van Martin and they should be able to get to that, that information. Um, I'd like to talk about the parking. Um, and looking at this, uh, the city would provide a maximum of 25, and this is in the lease agreement on page three, that the city would provide a maximum of 25, um, dedicated parking places for employees and tenants, um, of the leasing, and in a city-owned, uh, lot or a structure. I'd like to get a cost on what those, um, those rental spaces would be. Also, it talks about the fact, the next one in E, it talks about the fact that the leasing shall have an option to purchase up to 2,000 two, uh, two-hour parking, um, validated cards each month from the city parking division at the rate of $2. What is the current rate?
Uh, this, this is a discounted rate for the Lansing Center lot.
It is a discounted rate. I want to know what the original, I want to know what the current rate is.
Uh, we can get you the parking dollars. Basically, what we're talking about here, Madam Councilwoman, is, you know, we, we think about that a lot across the street, the Lansing Center lot is predominantly supporting the Lansing Center by day. Um, we think that, uh, most of these passes are going to go towards evening time guests, um, though there would be some lunch. I think it's probably gonna vary day by day. Um, this is a giant bulk purchase, um, and it really will again be first come, first served for those clients. I can imagine that over the months and years of operation, we may fine tune this, um, somewhat. Um, so I think this is, um, you know, hopefully a little bit of a moving target downwards, um, down the road.
I think-
But I can supply you those numbers as well.
I'd like to see those numbers. I also like to know, um, if we are, and, and I think, um, Detroit Rising, John, I think you made a comment, you know, providing, um, with COVID. Uh, what is your timeline if, um, we're still, um, looking at restrictions with COVID, um, through 2021? I mean, how do you see the financials working on this based on that?
Financials on saying we, we open or saying we delay an open?
Delay an opening.
A, the first hurdle is, uh, finance and equity. Then get, get to that, pass that hurdle, then we'll set a construction timeline. So that's the first hurdle. Once you get past that hurdle, construction timeline, say it's eight, 12, 10 months to get this done. You know, you're potentially again in the spring of 22. At that point, you know, our forecasts don't show us being in, in a, in that depressed of a COVID scenario, um, but you're-
A lot of us didn't pick this as a, you know, we, we didn't realize we'd be where we are right now.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So, you know, we would utilize as much open air, we'd utilize as much curbside with the food vendors. Um, you know, and again, it's hard, it's hard to pinpoint what will be allowed, um, maximizing your outdoor space. We found, you know, again, like I said, we're able to function at Detroit Shipping Company right now. And each, each week, we're improving at about 20%, so we're, we're anticipating that if there could be, you know, a, a deficit in the spring of 21, is it 20% at that point? You know, just with people who make historic changes as opposed to, you know, the masses who seem to be interested in going out and experiencing? So, um, by the spring of 22, we, we feel comfortable that it shouldn't affect our business model.
One last question to the administration, um, looking at the fact that, uh, we have businesses in downtown Lansing that are struggling to stay open and to be able to survive. I mean, we've talked about outdoor service in the alleys and a number of different things to try to make them viable. How do you see this, um, with the struggle that these businesses are having at this particular time?
Madam Councilwoman, I, I had expected that Kathleen Edgely was going to be on the call tonight, in fact, she may be in the audience. Um, we've certainly worked quite closely with DLI, um, on this project, including in the recruitment piece. So Kathleen and her folks, um, and the businesses she represents, um, are here, oh, I, I see she's there, I don't know Kathleen, would you like to, uh?
She'd be willing to speak if called upon. So Ryan, you've, you've called her on the hot seat.
If that's, if that's all right with you, uh, council members.
Yes.
Hi, everybody, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wood, can you repeat your question?
Based on the struggles that our businesses are having in the downtown area right now, to maintain and be, and stay viable, um, and the fact that we're even looking at trying to have outdoor services, service in alleys, how do you see this having an impact on those businesses that are currently on the cusp of whether they stay viable or not?
And having this meaning a project that, the Lansing Shuffle Board, um, I mean, overall, the project that they are proposing actually fits really well into these COVID-type times because it's an entrepreneurial feeder system. I, I look at the opportunities that exist not only to support and draw more traffic to our downtown, which will then help all of the businesses who are within the downtown district, but even partnership opportunities with locations like the Allen Neighborhood Center, uh, the Black Markets that have popped up on the South Side, the South Side Farmers Markets, uh, models like that as well, working.
I, I said that was my last question, actually, I do have one more to the administration. You know, just recently, we closed down Moore's Park Shuffle Board, um, there, you know, they had a, at the park, they had a shuffleboard, uh, thing there, and part of why we were told by the Parks Department that, um, we were closing that and not rebuilding, um, because it needed some improvements made to it, was there was not a cry for that in the community. How do you justify that in this?
Uh, Madam Councilmember, I would, uh, actually, I would probably throw this back to John and his team. Um, you know, certainly, we've, we've seen what they've produced in Detroit, we love it, we think that they're, um, visionary business people, and I think that they could probably speak to the business model of what they're proposing, um, for this particular space and why it would work, um, in this context and perhaps not in a park.
Very, thank you. Yeah, I, I can't speak to the park or where it's at or how it's performing. I assume, you know, there, there, there wasn't, uh, someone there helping people along and giving them an entertainment experience where they're eating and drinking and looking, when people go out now, they're not necessarily looking to sit down and have a long meal, looking to engage in other activities. At Detroit Shipping Company, we, we, we added volleyball for that. And on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we have 60 to 80 people come out and they partake in volleyball, of which then they're buying food and drink from, you know, our small retailers. So the shuffleboard component is actually even more open for more people, there, there's no discrimination on age, uh, to be able to do, um, a shuffleboard club. It's right now, there's very successful clubs in Chicago, London, New York, and, um, other cities. We just feel like in our space, you know, it'd be a captured moment that draws people to experience and enjoy it.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Now I'm gonna hold you to that being your last question as we move on to Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, I am going, uh, Carol has a great way of doing this, I'm gonna do the same thing. For the administration, uh, how often have we signed a 40-year lease for a building at a third of the rate that the last tenant was renting?
Well, this will be my first 40-year lease, so I would say I have, I have not. Um, we, we have a unique property here, it's unique times, it was difficult to, um, keep and fill. Certainly, it's a challenge being a publicly owned thing, um, you know, we're looking to, to be creative, uh, with this. Uh, we're looking for something sustainable and, um, you know, we're looking at a lot of different things here. So, um, this, this is a challenging site, um, we're, we're doing what we think is, um, is right and, and long-term and sustainable.
I mean, the waterfront bar and grill is doing just fine for $75,000 an hour, or $75,000 a month, but we can talk about that later. Um, my next question, I think that Carl might be able to answer this question, though I think that John might be able to address this as well. What are the Brownfield eligible activities that you'll be completing to receive the LBRA funds?
Chris, why don't you, Chris or Carl?
Chris, Chris is the best one to answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, it, there's a variety, um, under the statute, it does allow for public improvements, um, especially in situations where they, uh, include, uh, public facilities that's, you know, undergone, um, uh, transferring or, uh, for example, the, the Rotary Park, uh, the LBRA did participate, um, in some of those improvements as well. Uh, for this project, we don't have a specific list as of yet, um, still finalizing the construction plan. Uh, but they will be eligible under statute, um, and they're brought before the LBRA board. Um, but it could include, um, a variety of things. Uh, it, it wouldn't be, you know, personal property or, um, you know, furnitures and fixtures, things like that. It would be, uh, more so, uh, an investment in the, the, the building itself to be, um, investment in, uh, city-owned property.
Thank you, I think that before I vote on this lease and before I, you know, make a decision on whether or not this thing is worth it to the city, I think that that $400,000 that would be going into the LBRA is probably really important for us to be discussing, especially because I have seen brownfields in the past that haven't really been brownfields per se, but we just define them moving forward. So I'd, I'd be, uh, before I vote on this thing, I'd like to see that or it's gonna be a straight up no, to be honest, because I'm sick of giving tax breaks to developers over and over and over again for basically nothing. Especially because, you know, this thing was completely operational before Andy drove out, the people who were there, before the city drove out. Um, uh, my next question, uh, it, it was said that nothing would be, is anticipated to be used in the park space. I wanted to clarify that because it is a public park space as of right now. Is there a possibility through this lease, this is probably an answer that Jim can give me, is there a possibility through this lease that, uh, they could start utilizing the public walkway? They could start utilizing what is already public structures for their own use? Because I realize that the, the space that is covered over this thing includes part of that parkway. Jim?
Well, first of all, the activities that are contemplated, and maybe I'm not gonna exactly answer your question, but the, uh, the activities that are contemplated could be construed as park purposes. Shuffleboard, things of that nature to satisfy the fact that, uh, the charter requires, you know, park uses. Um, in terms of the, um, usage, uh, we don't have anything specific, Greg, and at least on that usage, do we? I didn't see anything in there.
No, there, there wasn't anything in particular, just, I, I mean, the word was anticipated, that something could be anticipated to be used or something like-
Contemplated was the, was the-
Contemplated was the word, yeah, I'm just wondering, because that's really, because, you know, in a lease, when you say, oh, nothing's contemplated, but then a year from now, you have something that changes what's- And I, I didn't realize that, uh, sorry, second, I, I didn't realize that they, they had to be legitimate park activities, so that's a good thing to know, thank you, Jim.
Yeah, yeah, we've done this before, uh, you just can't lease away park property without having park purposes involved in it. You know, that is, you know, that was a threshold that we had to reach first on this lease.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Uh, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Uh, Councilmember, um, Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm just gonna bring up some phrases. Something for everyone, all the people, inclusive, act of all hours, and represents the community around us. Did you know that the Lansing Rescue Mission is a block away and so is the VOA a block away? So I guess I'm just wondering for what would be important for my support would just be like to really back that inclusiveness and consider our most vulnerable populations, our homeless population. This place sounds like it's gonna have multiple food vendors. Maybe somebody more creative than myself or with the administration can think about, um, a voucher program. Like, for example, if you just spent the night in the VOA, because there's only a certain amount of beds and you can count on that being full every single night and everybody else turned away. If you just spent the night, you can come over here and either play shuffleboard or get a bite to eat or have, I would say discount, but, you know, anything, any type of consideration. Will there be public restrooms that are truly public and people can use them no matter if they pay for something or no matter how they look? Um, can those restrooms be outside also, maybe like a side thing? Because there is that sand pit right there. I mean, it would be nice to be able to wash your feet off or, you know, get some water or something. So I guess, um, I don't know if it's been considered at all, if someone can answer that, that's great. If not, if you guys could try to incorporate something to, to consider truly everyone and not necessarily just the people with the money to spend while they're there. Thank you.
All right, yes, John Hartl again, and, and thanks for that question. Um, you know, you, when you, when you dive into a venture like this, you're obviously saying everyone and always, you do your best, right? And you do your best to represent what's around you, right? So when we look at seven vendors, we take in everyone, we say, you know, where did this person grow up? How old is this person? What's their background? What's their food culture and who do they represent? Um, Detroit Shipping Company, we started with three women-run businesses, three men-run businesses. We had someone from Dearborn, Ann Arbor, Berkeley, Detroit. We just tried to find all different group scenarios. And there was a moment that you're kind of speaking to that, um, always gets me. On Thanksgiving, we closed down, we do full plates, full hearts, and we serve about 200 meals up that day. And we opened the doors to the homeless and the needy, and a man came in and, um, he started crying. And he said, you know, I, I didn't know I was allowed to be in here. And I didn't know that he was an African-American man, and he saw that most of our staff, half the restaurateurs, they're all African-American. He said, I, I didn't know I was represented in this, in this place. And so you, you do your best as a neighbor, you do your best as someone in the community to try to represent what's around. Now, are we gonna check every box every time? It's impossible. You can only do your best. Uh, on the bathroom, the bathrooms are public and they're open for, you know, all, you know, people in the park to use. Um, obviously, there'll be, uh, if there's private parties and private big buyouts, those moments will be closed, but generally, those don't happen during the day hours, especially the hours you're speaking of. Um, I don't know about, uh, you know, a foot washing station, that's probably more of a community park space and it'd be solved there with the outdoor, you know, pump water and whatnot. Um, but I, I do hear you, and, uh, it, it's your, our intention, it's always been our intention to be inclusive and to really represent what's around us.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmembers, oh, go ahead.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'll just add that, I appreciate you looking into that, so I'm sure that stuff is still going on because there's a lot of other things to vote on and talk about, so I'll just be looking to see how you guys, um, kind of bring that out.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Hussein?
Uh, yeah, so most of my questions were exhausted, but I do still have a few, um, and they, if they were answered, I apologize. Is there anything legally enforceable, I mean, in terms of agreements in place to hold, um, them accountable for, for housing a certain number of local businesses? I would assume Jim can answer that.
Jim?
We're going to have a, um, an MOU that's, uh, first of all, it's a city building, we're talking prevailing wage. There have been discussions with Bryce Dobernick, and we're looking for an MOU also to deal with the local labor and with the prevailing wages, you know, we have an ordinance on prevailing wage for a city building.
I think, Adam, were you talking, uh, Jim, Adam was talking more specifically to vendors occupying the spaces.
Oh.
Oh.
Isn't there a provision in the lease that gives a discount to local, um, vendors?
Greg is aggressive.
But there is a percentage discount in the lease, um, for local vendors.
Greg, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, can you guys hear me this time?
Yes.
Yay. Um, and I I just wanted to touch back. I I know this was asked a couple of times, and I'm sorry that my mic wasn't working, but there's a very clear delineation regarding the property that they would control under the lease and the property that they would not control. The park is a very large parcel and this is, it's not subparceled out. So, um, they would not have access or control in any way. And actually, we had a great conversation with Brett Kishinsky where he said, uh, I want them to have to take care of those plants and trees right next to their building, please. And so they have to take care of those plants and trees right next to their building on that slope, but the rest of the park is still the park. The, uh, and that's, you can see that in the legal, in the, sorry, in the Exhibit A, um, uh, overview survey. Um, I am looking at one moment. Uh, there are a number of requirements that they have, uh, and then specifically when you look at, uh, sublesses or or assignment used by others. It's, uh, paragraph eleven at the bottom of page five, um, stating that Lansing-based vendors or retailers shall be eligible for a twenty percent reduction in rent rates during the first six months of any tenancy from the lessie. And that essentially gives, uh, a leg up, a boost to any, um, City of Lansing-based, uh, company. We had to be careful not to make it totally one-sided or to give them, uh, from a legal perspective, we don't want to make it too illegally favoring towards Lansing residents, but that's permissible, essentially. Uh, so it gives a strong incentive to seek out Lansing, uh, based businesses. And then the other piece is, and I apologize, you can't find it right off the top or right, right this moment. But that, uh, they have to offer reduced rates, uh, if anybody's gonna lease out the space, uh, if any Lansing-based entity like, uh, one of the neighborhood associations or something wants to lease out the space, uh, to use it, um, there's a reduced rate, uh, for Lansing entities in that way, again, because it's a, it's still a city-owned building.
Adam, or Councilmember?
Where, so, whereas I appreciate that, I certainly hope that that does not, uh, you know, essentially work in reverse and dissuade this particular company, uh, from taking on local vendors or, uh, local groups in terms of engaging in that community space. With regards to the, to the lease, and I understand that, you know, we're going to have a separate process for the lease agreement, we're going to have a public hearing. That being said, it's really difficult to have these conversations separate from one another. The forty-year lease piece, that gives me heartburn, I'm not gonna lie to you. Um, and the fact that, you know, I understand, you know, we were subsidizing the city market about eighty thousand dollars per year. So although waterfront bar and grill were paying um, the city seventy thousand dollars annually, obviously, um, that was wiped out completely by this subsidy. Uh, my understanding is that this lease agreement starts at twenty four thousand dollars. I'm trying to pull it up, but from my edification and the public, uh, public certification, on an annual basis, that is, that is supposed to elevate what? A certain percentage? Somebody just answer that very quickly.
On an annual, oh, uh, you're talking about the, uh, the annual escalation of the rent term?
Yeah.
Uh, it's gonna be inflation, uh, or two point five percent per year, whichever is greater for the first ten years, uh, and then it gets recalculated significantly. It would, I mean, presuming they are successful, it would go up significantly after the ten-year mark.
I I would add into this too, that utilities, um, you know, were running, uh, for the city market when it was partially, um, uh, filled, um, all the way to fully filled, anywhere from forty to sixty five thousand dollars, um, uh, a year. So that's, that's something that we're not gonna be responsible. Uh, Detroit Rising is taking that on as part of this too. So do take that into to consideration as well, please.
All right, President's metaphor, I think that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, Jim, did you have something you wanted to add before I move on to Councilmember Dunbar and then myself, and then we're gonna move on?
Just want to follow up to, uh, Councilmember Betts's question. Uh, we are, we have, uh, forty years on the stadium to the lug nuts, even though it's not a true lease. It started in ninety-five and with a couple of amendments in between to deal with the outfield construction and all that. It expires in thirty-five, so that's forty years. There, I was trying to think of some, um, examples. It's not a true lease, but it's close. It's a, it's an operating agreement. It has a lot more to it than a true lease. And hopefully, Carol, uh, Councilmember Wood's question uh, about the project description, the project area and the lease, the lease covers the city market. Project area, Chris Klein is larger than that, or Carl?
Yes, uh, the project area for the EDC project plan, uh, encompasses that entire parcel, which also has portions of Riverfront Park and Rotary Park, but it, it's specifically for use on the, uh, building site.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's clear to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. Um, what is the appraisal on that building?
Oh, uh, Madam Councilwoman, you caught me by, I don't know why you caught me by surprise, but now for some reason, I'm having a complete mental block in my head and I can't recall what the number had come in, um, at, um, uh, Chris, do you recall offhand?
Uh, I believe the, the two thousand eighteen appraisal, uh, I think it was seven hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay, so, all right, now, I don't see, I'm I'm trying to read the lease agreement while, um, doing this side by side on the screen and I, I see the, the twenty four thousand, which basically comes down to two thousand a month. What other potential tenant sources of income are there for, um, for the developer? What is, what is the, or for the shuffleboard club, besides the restaurants? And I would like to know what the potential lease, uh, would be for the subletters within there. So how much do they pay you versus how much do you pay us? And I recognize that, you know, it's not gonna be the same. But what other sources of revenue exist in this, um, venture besides the rental of the restaurant space?
So the operation goes like this. We'll have, uh, sublet tenants, right? Food. Uh, we look to do a podcast or radio station that helps everyone on their marketing side. So people are podcasting from Lansing Social Board, social, shuffleboard and social club, which again draws, uh, new attention to all the vendors inside the space. I know, doing like a merch shop, looking for a local T-shirt guy to come in, take over space, end up taking on the contract with all the different small vendors and parties and events that happen there. So we'll get rents from about six to eight vendor spaces, but in between food and that. Obviously, shuffleboard, uh, on league nights will charge rental fees for league nights, and there'll be, you know, charged fee for usage on the, on the shuffleboard at different hours on open, open nights. And then, of course, there's a bar.
Okay, so again, what are you considering for your, your rental amounts for those vendors coming in?
So it's mixed and it's all tied to cost of construction, which we don't have a full natural number quite yet. Right now, we're earmarking about three point two million dollars in, in development on site. I'm trying to pull up my numbers, I apologize. Are we in the lease to buy?
And while you're looking, I mean, the, the idea, I heard you, Greg, say that, you know, the, there's an incentive to go with a local, um, vendor, but not really if the, the developer's getting less money out of the deal. You know, we're, we want to incentivize, I would love to incentivize, uh, local, you know, food trucks to go brick and mortar or local entrepreneurs that are online right now to get into brick and mortar. Um, but I'm not seeing the incentive of cheaper space being, you know, that's an incentive to the, to the vendor, but it doesn't make you want to put them in your building if it lowers your ultimate return. So could you speak to that too?
So I found out in my document. So we're programming, uh, most of space at twenty dollars a square foot. Mind you, that's only a two hundred and forty square foot space. On the, we have an incubator in two Lansing set up at fourteen dollars a, a square foot. We really see that, um, Allen, uh, incubator space that's gonna be built, uh, in the neighborhood, Allen space. We see that as an incubator that potentially they can graduate into our space and give people a next layer. A big part of our narrative of Detroit Shipping Company is that, and now Lansing Social Shuffleboard and Social Club, is that we are community-based and that we are coming to the neighborhood and we're not trying to gentrify or take over space and redefine the area, but we want to improve and work on what's there in the community. But understand also, we we do want to bring, uh, food and operators from a bit further away as well to cross-market in the space. If we all went to the same book club and then, you know, you'll never get into find new books, because you're just talking to the same people all the time. So you need to blend and and mix with with other groups from different neighborhoods and different areas. We do love that Lansing does have a diverse, uh, neighborhood and, um, we're really interested to see what food operations and operators are there. We were pleasantly surprised when we went to Rio Town and to Old Town to see what was, was happening there, and we found it a little more elevated than we expected, and we were kind of excited about that. So, you know, again, as if you go fiscally, and if you, pure motivation is just on, on the cash, you're right, you're standing to hold there. But if you say to yourself that I'm trying to create a community and trying to really engage in different spheres of influence, and I need to draw from Lansing, I need to draw from, um, around the neighborhood and around the area, you you're gonna try to pick and pull from those areas as well.
Okay, so based on your fourteen to twenty dollars a square foot, and I'm assuming that graduates over time, basically, if they, if they make a profit, what's the total square footage in the leased out space so that I can do an estimate of what you would bring in in a month from your vendors?
This eight thousand what of? Eight thousand square feet of private tenant space? No, it's common space, I'm sorry. Two thousand two hundred. Does that exclude the bar?
So two thousand two hundred in viable tenant space for the restaurants?
And the merch shop, podcast studio, yeah.
I'm sorry, while you work on your math, I'm gonna move on to the next person, um, if you, if you're all right with that. Councilmember Spies, then what?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, did I hear you? Okay, let me step back. So the forty-year lease, are you, are there any, are there plans long-term to purchase the property? I I'm trying to wrap my head around a forty-year lease, and why would somebody enter into a forty-year lease? And so I I thought I heard you say lease to buy. Um, are you, is that, is that the long-term play here is to ultimately purchase the space?
Ultimately, if there's an opportunity, we would love to purchase the space.
Okay, all right. Um, I didn't see anything in there about, I mean, the forty-year lease, if, if, if it doesn't work, if the shuffleboard doesn't work or the food, or the vendors don't work, um, there's nothing in the lease that says you can come back to council or come back to the administration and say we've decided to do, um, a flea circus. You can just do your flea circus. Is that, that, is that how I'm looking at the lease agreement? By the way, I like flea circuses, so no one call me about.
Do you mean a flea market?
Yeah, no, I said flea circus, mister. But is it, but Greg, am I, am I reading that correctly, that if, if, for whatever reason, if this forty-year lease we've entered into it, that if they decide to, if the business model as currently is, does not pan out, there's nothing, they, they don't have to come back to council to do a different business model in that. They can, they can change it.
That, that's generally correct. There are a couple of, uh, caveats that I would put on that. One is there are a number of requirements for that structure that we are making them have all the time, no matter what they are, flea circus or otherwise, that there are certain things that have to be met in order for it to still be considered, uh, essentially useful as a public space, because it's still a public building, um, unless if, uh, very hypothetically, they purchase it. I know that they very much want to, but that's a separate question. The other thing that I would say is that, um, the, uh, if, if they want to change the building, so that they, that they're gonna, they're gonna put a lot of money into it to make it do this one thing better, if they would need to change that layout, so, uh, I'm guessing a flea circus doesn't need a bunch of mini kitchens. In your hypothetical, if they wanted to convert it into a flea circus, they would have to come back, um, and say, we're gonna totally change your building again, because the idea is under the lease. There's a specific, the changes are specified, because it's still the city's building. Um, and so if they want to, like, blow out a wall or blow up, I mean, I don't know, add two more stories to the structure, they have to come back and get approval to do that.
I just find that I don't, I don't see where the incentive is to have a forty-year lease with that.
Well, one of the things I've noticed, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm cutting the line here, but I've, I've been quiet for the whole.
I'm done, so thank you.
I think when you, you're looking, I'm looking at this lease with the three million dollars of investment, and I think that that's where the forty years comes in, is three million dollars of capital investment is when I'm looking at this. Now, I I haven't looked at fine-toothed comb at all. I, I appreciate Greg, the rent escalator you mentioned in year ten, based on their gross receipts is, is definitely a sweetener for the city come twenty, thirty, whatever, five years before the stadium leases up. Um, but so I'll go back to Kathy, uh, Councilmember Dunbar, you had a question and then, or you were still going on, and then, uh, Carol, after that.
No, that's okay. I, I actually did my math. I, I was actually looking at a different part of the lease, since we were talking about the escalator after ten years. There's also a clause in there that says that, um, lease will go up after the first partial year, um, every year by, looks like the rate of inflation. Am I getting that right?
Two point five percent or the rate of inflation, whichever is greater.
So that escalates the rent as well, even, not, not as large over the first ten years, but, um, it's still more over time than, than what it starts with. Okay, I'm done.
All set, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Wood will give you the second to last question, and then we'll, we're gonna wrap this up, please. And then also, folks, we, we still have the public hearing and we'll have some more meetings on this. This was to introduce the council to the basic concepts, although we've certainly gotten a little bit beyond basic, so that's good, but we, this is not the last conversation this group will have on this topic.
In the project plan, it talks about prevailing wage. I know, um, and I'll use the tropos as an example. When we entered into that agreement, it was supposed to be prevailing wage, and one of the ways that, uh, that was gotten around was that, and that was a loan, was that they bought equipment with it and said that the people installing the equipment were paid the prevailing wage, but everything else that was done on the building did not require, um, because that was not part of the loan. So, um, with this provision in there, is this for the entire build-out paying the prevailing wage or only the four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars? And Greg is shaking his head. Um, so, okay.
I, that, this, that, that, you are asking the correct questions, uh, Madam Councilmember, and, uh, the developer, much to their disappointment, um, but, uh, ultimate cooperation. Ask the exact same questions in the exact same order, uh, and we assured them that, no, no, our ordinance applies to all of our buildings. So if you're gonna play around in our building, you're gonna have to pay prevailing wage. Um, and they understood that. Um, that was a question very early on. They asked it again a second time, and we reassured them in writing, yes, in fact, and they said, okay, fine. And I, and I am poking a little bit of fun, because we have had plenty of back and forth with this development team, but they have been, um, transparent about, uh, how they want to do things, and they very much desire to play by the rules, uh, especially in this regard.
The one last question is, I know in some of the other projects that we've done, there were provisions in there that if it was sold, um, before the lease agreement was up, that we would capture. That we would capture taxes um on that. And I'm wondering um whether that was discussed at all. If this is sold before the forty year lease agreement is up. That there would be a portion of property taxes that would have to be paid. Um, or whether this was not approached at all.
I, what do you mean by property taxes?
This is a tax free building right now. If we revert it to a private ownership, would they be responsible for property taxes?
If, if. Well, I know if it's sold, they, they will, but what I'm saying is some lease agreements that we've done in the past and Jim knows what I'm talking about. Um, we have said that if it was sold during that period of time. You know, then we would collect property taxes um from that. And so I'm, I'm, you know, uh, um, prior to the sale. So I'm just wondering whether that was approached in this discussion at all.
Councilmember, what are you discussing? Retroactive property taxes?
Yes, I am.
Does that make it clear, Greg?
I guess so, and I would, I would, I'm curious from Jim's perspective, what, what deal that may have been on, on this one. I don't think that would be permissible. Um, because it's a tax exempt city structure at the moment. Um, if it were to be sold, the lease would terminate. Um, the property would come on to the rolls and I, I would say that from a tax capture perspective. Um, any sale, under the terms of the lease, they can't seek to even ask council and the public to purchase the building until. Um, taxes are captured to pay back the uh whatever money the city is putting in um to its structure. But I'll, I'll turn to Jim um regarding retroactive tax capture.
That's not re, am I in here? Not retro. What happens practically, I mean, practically versus theory. Practically, they come, they want to buy the building, then you get into another negotiation. And then there's a modification to this agreement before it goes to council for a vote. So everything will be on the table at that point.
Thank you.
Correct.
Hey, um, and then I have one question which seems trivial at this point, after all, my council colleagues answered such, asked such great questions, but. It's about, um, you have a number of um tenants, five to seven sort of tenants on rotation, that kind of thing. Um, I know your hope is that those are always filled, but what is there, what's sort of the, the grounding, you know, the Macy's, if you will, of the anchor tenant. Of this facility, if in the absence of, you know, we, we saw it with the city market um and the waterfront bar and grill, it turned into just one tenant there. What's your, what's your operational plan for, you know, if those tenants don't materialize as quickly or, you know, they come in, they ebb and flow? Is there an anchor tenant there to make sure this is a viable restaurant, bar, entertainment space?
So, you know, we essentially operate the facility ourselves. We operate the sales team to draw events and uh bring people to the space. We operate the bars, so we ourselves are uh in, in the business. We're actually operating the whole facility. We run the front of the house and we manage all the tenants in the space. We give uh two to three year leases to each of the tenant, they're not just coming in and pop up. Because you really can't learn to run a business, you, you can't learn out of a six month or a, a year lease on a restaurant business, right? You're, you're taking, stepping away from your life and launching a business. They're all gonna invest twenty five to thirty thousand in their space. And they're gonna need to recapture that on there. So we give two to three year leases. You do want some turnover. But you, you also want some people to stay, right? Because that's, most restaurant concepts make it seven to ten years. And then, and then, you know, you end up having a, a refresh. For this, we, we have a consistent rotation every, you know, three to four years. And, and you're having new, new, new flavors and new vendors come in, so allows us to uh change the face of the business. So we, we are essentially are the anchor ourselves.
Okay, that's very helpful. And then John, explain to me, does this work in Detroit this way? Um, kind of what I'm hearing from you is we give these entrepreneurs a place to incubate their business idea and then. They learn to fly and then they fly somewhere else. Is this like you work with other neighborhoods, other, or other neighborhood, like downtown neighborhood association or Old Town or Rio Town or South Side? Um, organizations to find permanent space for these tenants? You, you don't envision them as permanent tenants, correct?
Yeah, so I'll use Detroit Shipping Company because that's obviously interesting. So I've got five main food vendors there. Um, one of which she's entrenched and will never go away. She's, she runs the house. Everyone knows her as mama and she's. Literally is there sixty hours a week. Her husband keeps saying she has to come home. She doesn't go home. She's great. She's coming with me to Lansing. So she's been training her son to run Detroit and I'm bringing uh Chef Genevieve. She actually was a James Beard Award nominee last year. Great person, great family, and Lansing will love having her food concept in there. Um, then I have Max Hardy who runs Coop, uh it's a Detroit based business. He grew up in the Grand Mount Rosedale neighborhood. He moved to Miami, ended up becoming a um, a catering chef for NBA players, wrote a book with Amari Stahlmeier, Cook and Mari. Moved to New York, followed Amari there, then ended up getting on a big, um, it's called circuit of, of. Black chef circuit where they're running and going around and doing different pop ups experiences, catering. And he came back to Detroit because he wanted to teach culinary arts and how to run a business in his neighborhood. So his whole kitchen is Detroit based uh employees. Learning the business. Now Max himself is opening up two or three other concepts in the city of Detroit. Right? So he's not taking Coop, which is in our place and taking other places. He's doing other concepts in the space. Then I've got Petro DiKopoulos, uh, who's a, a Greek, born Chicago based restaurateur. Moved to Detroit, opened up Texas Day Brazil here, then ended up marrying a, a, a girl from Detroit. They, they moved out to the suburbs and opened up a bistro, family restaurant, wanted to come back and make a name for himself in Detroit market. Opened up a small taco concept called Brujo, of which in that time, his point was to make his name and really push his narrative. And so he senses taking over uh the Athenium Hotel and their whole food and beverage concept. So he's now running a multimillion dollar uh. Food and beverage concept at the main hotel. So everyone has their aspirations and they're all gonna take it and go where, where they are looking in their lives to go. Um, you know, we provide a space that allows, and we tell them this too. Don't come to shipping company looking to make a ton of money, but come for exposure. The same thing will happen at, at the Lansing market. You're one of six or seven and someone might come to experience a Lansing burrito shop. And they'll find three or four concepts they hadn't seen before. And then all of a sudden, now everyone's getting exposure, right? Especially if you're in a group of six or seven. Not everybody wants to go eat a certain type of food that night. You come here, you experience a bunch of different food and you're exposing for these vendors. So they'll make out of it what they can. We do is provide, you know, a lot of structure and there's a lot of collaboration between all of the vendors. And everyone gets to talk. We have weekly meetings with all the vendors on the phone. We do a monthly fiscal meeting with everyone, kind of getting an understanding how everyone's doing. We, we, you know, and we all work through uh this uh, I don't know, this collaboration of uh business, so.
Thank you. It sounds like a modern hipster version of Clara's menu and I'm excited about it, if anyone remembers Clara's, but. Um, thank you very much for that explanation. That, that answers my question. Um. Council members, I don't see any other questions and as I said, we will have this up on the agenda a couple more times in the near future. The resolution this evening does set the public hearing for October twelfth, twenty twenty, and that is the day. That the thirty day layover on the um agreement will expire, so that satisfies the city attorney's problems or concerns, rather. Uh, councilman, I'm sorry, uh, city attorney Smirka.
Just to follow up on Councilmember Spitzley's question, I direct you with paragraph five of the lease. On the building use and the covenant is a material part of the agreement. And there's a provision for liquidated damages of ten thousand dollars a month. So you add your flea market or flea circus.
He wants a flea circus, which I did Google while we've been sitting here and I learned something new today, so there we go. I question your entertainment options, Patricia Spitzley, but it is a free country still for now. Um, so I'm gonna move on from that. I want to thank John and Kirsty for your presentation this evening. Brian, uh, for your team's work on this, Chris and Carl from LEAP for um, for all that you do to bring these in front of us. Um, Councilmember Wood for ensuring that no one got out of here early and um everyone else. Deputy Mayor Harkins, the city attorney's office, I know that they've done some work. So I just, just be aware that we will have a public hearing on October twelfth. So the folks in Detroit Rising, if you want to mark your calendar for around seven o'clock for that evening. Um, we will, we will invite you to do another presentation if you want. Uh, that's when the public will be paying the most attention usually is those public hearings. Um, so um in the intervening month, if you have, or three weeks rather. Uh, if you have other things you'd like to add to that, to that deck, please go ahead and do so. So Mr. Smirka and then we're gonna move on quickly, please.
That was an old hand.
Okay, very good. Vice President Hussein. Oh, uh, before I do that, Councilmember Wood.
Um, could someone, and, and we can do it at the public hearing, explain the payback on the loan. Um, because that's part of what we're setting the public hearing for, so.
Yeah, if we could have that loan a little bit more detailed explanation.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, for the uh ten twelve event, that would be awesome. Thanks so much, folks. I really appreciate your time. Uh, we will move on to business before the committee.
Um, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. So the first two things are, uh, we have a resolution for the public hearing. Uh, that is the only action item uh related to this right now. So Vice President Hussein, if you call the, make the motion, please.
Sure, I would move the resolution setting the public hearing for October twelfth. And this pertains to the project area and project, or project plan and project area for the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. There is a motion before us. Is there further discussion from this committee on the motion? Seeing none, if the clerk would please call the roll.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar? Is she shaking her head?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bets?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatterford?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero for the resolution to set the public hearing for October twelve.
Very good. Thank you all. Um, and folks, uh, we will pick up the discussion on the lease agreement for the evening of the twelfth. If that's all right with you, I do want to get to our budget priorities. I figure we've covered most, we've kind of intertwined them together. So we've, we've got that covered unless someone strongly objects and then we will come back to it after we discuss our budget priorities. But for those of you on the phone from, or on the, the call rather, from the Lansing Shuffleboard Project, we are all set with you. Thank you for your time this evening. Um, we will rehear this um resolution this evening to set the public hearing. But at that point, it'll just be a, a motion to, to set the public hearing and a brief description from the vice president. So your presence is not needed at the seven o'clock meeting. Well, which will probably be more like the seven thirty meeting. Thank you. Alright, so the first thing, the next thing up is our budget priorities. So how I figured we would do this is. Each committee has put forward uh their own recommendations and then we will go to council to see if there's anything else that, that we need to add from Cal. So what I'd like to do is start in order. Um. Oh, that changes my plan. I just looked at this again. Let's start with, not with the committee, the whole. Um, we're gonna start with um committee on development and planning, so, because all the committees have done their work. And what we'll do is we will move the committee, the committee recommendations. Um, I would prefer to do them as a whole. And if someone objects to one or two or the others, we can pull them off, treat them like a consent agenda. So each committee one is adopted and then we will move the resolution as a substitute resolution to city council. Does that make sense to everybody and does law think that's gonna comport with our process? Jim's ignoring me, so that's a yes. If no one tells me no, that means I get to do what I want. Alright, so the first thing uh we're gonna look at is the committee on development and planning. And I will ask the chair of that committee to please uh walk us through the recommendations from that committee, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and, and I wasn't uh there last week, so if I missed something, gentlemen, um, please feel free to jump in. So um, we have five priorities um that we'd like to recommend. Um, the first one is um fifty to eighty thousand dollars and it, it would be a uh full time employee for a. For the financial empowerment um department or office. Um, but the purpose of that um full time employee is to focus on small business, minority business and female owned business. We've seen, um, and we know that um a, a lot of times those groups have, have difficulties. Um, writing business plans or even knowing what resources are out there. And so that full time employee will, will focus on um providing that type of business assistance to minority businesses. Um, small businesses, female owned business. Um, we also included a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. For the reactivation of the facade improvement grant program. Um, number three uh is, yeah, we wanted to also, you know, uh, look at. The return on equity um for the previous facade grant. Um, and you know, how, how that was established, where the money was given, where are the locations? Um, number four is um uh money to um initiate an RFP for engagement of stakeholders. And completion of the community facilities plan, including school and county buildings, complete with an inventory of assets, goals, objectives for the facilities. Um, that will serve as the basis for community facility decisions in the future. And I think that this was something that we had. This may even have been a recommendation way back or part of a recommendation for the financial health team. But the bottom line is that we need to know what we have um so that we can make informed decisions. Um, number five um is um ending the subsidy of LEAP. Um, taking those funds, um, four hundred thousand dollars, um, and, and bringing those funds in-house, four hundred thousand dollars. Um, to fund economic development role, um, five FTEs for um economic development. Um, within the city of Lansing and then um moving a hundred thousand dollars to the facade improvement. Um, grant program. And those are the budget priority recommendations from development and planning. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I will take that as a motion from the chair of the uh DMP committee to adopt those as the recommendations into the uh resolution. So.
Yes.
Very good. Uh, the motion is before us and I do see a hand from Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. A couple of questions on this, Councilmember Spitzley. Um, first of all, number two, um, the um. First word, reactivation. Um, we currently have the facade improvement grant. So um, can we explain why we are using the word reactivation? Um, since it is something that is currently being done?
Um, I'm gonna.
Yeah, I want me to call someone from that was there that day, Councilmember Spitzley.
Excuse me?
Did you want me to go to?
Yes, please, please.
Councilmember Bets, can you answer that question? You were at the committee.
I think that's a better question for Adam.
Okay, Councilmember Hussein.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Sure, I can answer that and, and if I'm mistaken, I apologize. We had a couple of different conversations uh as part of the development of planning's uh committee's process, sorry. Um, and part of that conversation centered on the fact that um our uh, the budget that we officially adopted. Um, actually did not include the hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. And again, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, because of um, you know, some of the, the revenue issues we were experiencing or anticipating, uh, we were going to experience due to COVID. Um, there were some funds left over in that program. Our understanding was we were using leftover funds um this year. And, and this was more of a signal to anything uh to the, than anything to the administration that um we don't want, like in years past. Because we had had facade improvement uh program in the past. Uh, we had had economic downturns and things of that nature. This um, you know, type of program was put on the back burner and then we never really kind of reactivated the funding for it. Uh, and so this was um, I think intended to send uh kind of a signal to the administration that we wanted this funded again in this. I should say in fiscal year budget twenty two.
Okay, then my next question has to do with, you have a number, number two of a hundred and sixty five thousand. And then another hundred thousand in number five. Is that a combination of both? Um, so are we talking two hundred and sixty five thousand? Is it the hundred thousand that's coming out of the EDC? Um, the LEAP um grant is supposed to be the hundred and sixty five thousand? Can someone answer that one?
Because I, I look at on number three, we have a TBD, an analysis of the facade improvement grant program. I don't know if that hundred thousand dollars is supposed to be part of that, is supposed to be going toward that and part of it is supposed to be going to the grant. Program.
Go ahead. Oh, sorry, uh, Adam, I, I, I can clarify that point. The a hundred thousand dollars was specifically from LEAP. And I, I had put that in there just because I wanted to have something that we were spending the rest of that money on. And that was specifically, I, I decided because uh Councilmember Hussein was very interested in improving the facade grant program. And bringing in more money. I thought, why not double it and add a hundred thousand dollars to it, especially if we have this money coming out of LEAP? Now, if we want to consolidate those as one budget priority and do it that way, that's, that, I think that's perfectly fine for me as well. Well, whatever, whatever everybody thinks is cleanest, I think would be best.
I, I, my own personal opinion is I think you need to consolidate them and you need to come up with a figure that you're utilizing, you know. that you're u- utilizing, you know, in there, whatever it is, but something that we can all agree on, um, with that. Those are my.
So, um, Councilmember Wood and Councilmember Hussein and Councilmember Betts, since we don't have a T, we don't have a number on the analysis of the facade improvement grant program. Um, would it make sense to split it, half go to the analysis and half go to the reactivation, making it two fifteen and fifty, or do I mean, I don't, I don't care, but there's no money on the, the analysis dollars.
No.
That, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So we would, um, so our suggestion would be two hundred and fifteen thousand. I think that would be, did I, Kathy, did I add that right? Two hundred and fifteen thousand, I think, goes to, um, reactivation of the facade improvement grant program, and then fifty thousand dollars would be the analysis of the facade improvement grant program. Fifty plus a hundred and sixty-five is two fifteen, I think. Thank you. I don't have enough toes for that, so. All right.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Wood, did that answer all of your questions on this particular one? Very good. Thank you. Councilmember, uh, Betts?
Um, I oh, I, I, the, the thing that I was going to ask is if we could find a number for that TBD, but I guess fifty thousand dollars it is. So, that's my answer. Thank you.
All right. So, um, could someone summarize real quick the changes for council, or for, uh, Sheri, before we move on to Kathy's question?
Sure. Thank you, uh, Mr. President. So number one stays the same. It's fifty to eighty thousand dollars. We'll just say eighty grand, eighty thousand dollars for one uh, FTE in the financial empowerment, um, for a financial empowerment employee to focus on small business, minority business, and female-owned business. Um, number two is two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the reactivation of the facade improvement grant program. Um, fifty thousand dollars for the analysis of the facade improvement grant program to include a return on equity report on previous facade grants provides to small business. Excuse me. Forty thousand dollars to initiate an RFP for the engagement of stakeholders in the completion of a community facilities plan, including school and county buildings, complete with inventory assets, goals and objectives. Number five is, um, end the LEAP subsidy of five hundred thousand dollars. Taking those funds, uh, forty thousand dollars for five FTEs, fifty thousand dollars for the facade improvement grant program, and fifty thousand dollars for the analysis of a facade improvement grant program.
Sheri, did you get that?
I did. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So we're gonna now take the amended five proposals from the DMP Committee, and we're not, I'm sure this isn't going to pass constitutional muster here, but we're going to vote on those recommendations to include them as part of this committee's recommendations to City Council. So I'm s- I'm sorry, Kathy, go ahead. I apologize.
That's okay. Um, where did we get the idea that there's five hundred thousand go- going to LEAP? I thought it was three.
There is. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Pat.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say there's five hundred thousand dollars going to LEAP in their administrative fee. I looked this one up earlier, uh, in, in their contract, and then there's a couple hundred thousand dollars going in administrative fees for brownfields and other programs, but obviously we can't cut those. So that's where the five hundred thousand came from.
Okay, I, I really thought that it was three hundred, and I am, um, I'm trying to check that right now with Chris.
Um, Kathy, I think he's right. I think it's, it's, because I thought it was six hundred. I think it is five hundred thousand. Um.
So, um, Samantha? Go ahead.
I, I was going to say, this is one of the broad problems of not having an internal auditor. However, I think that our plan is.
We're working on it.
Mayor, and then I know we're working.
Got interviews next week.
Anyway, I just wanted to say that I think that the idea of these is to push them to the mayor's office, that can give us some numbers at some point with, with estimates on how much these actually are, because again, no internal auditors, so uh, that's just what I was thinking when I came up with the numbers that I did.
Yeah, and so I would say that, um, Kathy, for these purposes, um, while we strive for perfection, accuracy is probably not as important. This is more like a, a wish list to the administration, and I'm glad we have the numbers finally recognizing there are costs to the things that we're asking for. Um, I did get some information from LEAP this morning that was, it was a little different than, than this, but I'm not versed enough in it to argue, to make a point. So for me, this is a good enough to, to send out and say, we'd like to rethink the way we do economic development, and when we do it, this is how we'd like to spend those dollars. So I'm satisfied with the numbers, even if they're not quite perfect.
Okay. My, my other question would be, um, we have a hiring freeze because of budget issues, and so I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around, like, I'm assuming that the economic staff would be housed in um, the D and, well, I'm so used to saying D and P. The development office, and, um, and we don't pay the legacy costs at LEAP, so we are taking that on to bring that in here. And what is the assumption that would be done differently by staff in-house as opposed to what's being done at LEAP? Like, because there aren't, there aren't five people. You're talking about five full-time employees for four hundred thousand dollars to do work that was previously done by the LEDC. Has anyone talked to Brian about this to see how that would actually work?
Councilmember. Councilmember Betts? Do you want to respond to that about the numbers? Cause I think this was yours.
Yeah, the numbers, I estimate, they, again, they're just estimates, because we don't have internal auditor to get these numbers from us from LEAP or from anybody else, but I assumed, I mean, what does it come out to be for five people divided by four hundred thousand? I can't do arithmetic, even though I'm a mathematician, believe it or not. Um, however, I think that that was included in those costs and part of the and part of the assumption was that we would be taking on those legacy costs and paying for them in full, uh, as, as fringe benefits. Those, these, as I would understand this, and as, as I would imagine the mayor would do this, is he would, uh, put these people into economic development and planning, as you said. Um, I'm missing part of your question, though. Could you remind me what I'm missing?
I was asking, did anybody talk to the Director of that department to see how he feels about this? Because we are talking about putting folks in that department when there is, again, a hiring freeze. We've got legacy costs, so if you and I know that these numbers would fluctuate, whether they're four people, five people, whatever, but, I mean, our legacy costs are more than our wages, so for eighty thousand dollars per you're looking at a salary of less than forty grand a year, which is an impossibility, um, for a decent person in that position. But I, I, I'm just, I'm wondering, since, since there are so many unknowns, did anybody talk to Director McGrane about this?
I have had conversations with him about this in the past, but nothing that I can bring up right now, because there's nothing that we really talked, I mean, nothing that we could nothing that he said that I could say here. Um, however, that, that's a good question for him. I wonder if he's still on, if he can answer that question. As for the hiring freeze, I don't think that we're going to have a hiring freeze come twenty twenty-one mid-year. I, I mean, I could be wrong, but I'm expecting that we're going to be pretty far past the hump of COVID by next year, at least in terms of revenues and everything like that. So if there is a hiring freeze, that's going to be a problem that we have to face in the future. Um, but that's, that's all I can say about that right now.
Okay.
Councilmember Betts, um, can you, I think, what she, the second part was, you know.
Councilmember Spitzley, let me just.
Yeah, it was why, what, what's the reasoning behind this recommendation? Is, I'm sorry.
Ho- hold on just a minute. I'm going to call on Carol, but first I'm going to announce that it is seven PM. And anyone who's tuning in for the Lansing City Council meeting, we will start after the conclusion of the committee holds business and a short brief, brief recess for city council members to take care of human needs. So, uh, after that, um, we'll come back to Brandon, but first, Carol.
My question to you was, were you looking at putting these people in the development office or in the Lansing EDC? In the past, um, the employees were with the Lansing EDC, they were not part of the development office. So that makes a difference. Um, we don't have the legacy costs, we don't have some of those other things. So I'm not sure what your thought process was here, but I'm asking you whether that was part of what you might have been considering. I don't know.
I, I did not realize that they were held within the EDC, and that's a conversation that I think that we can have. I had just originally considered them being in the Economic Development and Planning Office um, to, to answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, again, I missed a, a piece of your question that I would like to answer.
Well, as I said, in it, you know, in the past, that's where, um, Carl and the, and the rest of the people were, were in the Lansing EDC office before there was a LEAP, and the legacy costs and the things were, um, that was part of their plan. It did not have to do with the city. There was just funds that were put in there for personnel, so.
Ultimately, the, the, I, I think that this will answer your question, Councilperson Wood. Um, I, my, my intent of this in having conversations with council people, with the administration, with LEAP even, one thing that I've noticed throughout time is that we've, we've had a problem with, uh, the fact that they've been a regional entity as well as a Lansing entity. And there have been questions brought up specifically about their efficacy in bringing Lansing projects when they're also looking at a regional perspective. And as part of that, I think that it would be best if they were held under the city, because then they are directly answerable to this council and to the mayor, or, uh, not directly answerable to us, but to the mayor's office, and we have more oversight over that process. And I think that that's a really important thing, because I see this as a consolidation, a cheap way, or a, a cheaper way to consolidate the economic development activities in a way that gives us the priority for those employees who are then working for us, as opposed to being held in an external company that is not answerable. I, I, as I'd imagine, again, if we're holding this within the city, I would hope that they would be under Brian McGrane's, uh, under Brian McGrane's purview and be able to answer the questions of more, more easily of, a- and they'll be able to understand more what these tax breaks really mean to us as a city, because they will be city employees as opposed to external employees. So that was my, uh, vision and imagination on this in particular.
Councilmember, uh, Dunbar?
I just, I really, um, I, I would have, and I get it's only a recommendation, and there's no guarantee that it's actually going to happen. Um, I get the concerns. But I, I don't think it's a realistic, one, I don't think it's, I don't think it's five hundred thousand. Two, I, I don't think that, that for people making nominal wages in the EDC, they still, we just still have to reconstitute the EDC into an actual viable depart, not a department, but, I mean, especially if they're only getting a subsidy from us, we'd be subsidizing this EDC. There would still have to be a source of funds from elsewhere to pay those legacy costs or anything like that. And again, I, I, this is just me. Um, I'm not convinced that we are going to be able to spend. I think that, uh, freeze and hiring is legit. I think that our legacy costs have gone from six hundred million to seven hundred and sixty-plus um, since we first started talking about this, and that is real. Um, that is real. We are, we are talking about reducing retirees' healthcare coverage right now um, to try to make ends meet. And, um, I, I just, I don't think that hiring anymore in-house that, that we have to deal with legacy costs for is, is going to be the way to go. Um,
Councilmember, are you asking that this item be, be considered separately from the remaining four priorities that have been identified?
Uh, you are a, you're a good president.
All right. Very good. So, um, the council member is asking that item five be pulled from the list and considered separately from the remaining four. So with that, I will ask the clerk to call the question, uh, call the roll, excuse me, on items one, two, three, and four from the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Spitzley?
I, I don't think, no. How does that work? So.
We'll vote on number five separately.
Okay.
It's my suspicion that Councilmember Dunbar would like to vote yes on items one through four and no on item five, so we're giving her the option.
I get that. I, I get that. I, I get that, and, and I respect that, but these are, these are just, these are recommendations, these are recommendations on priorities. I'm, I'm, I'm confused as to why from a, the recommendations. So it's either up or down. It's not, we're going to peel off number four, peel off number two, and vote on it separate. I just don't. And if I'm, if I'm, if I'm wrong about the process, that's fine. I'm just kind of.
Well, at, at the beginning, I said, if we're going to vote on them as, as a whole, unless there's, there's one that folks wish to consider separately, and it sounds like Councilmember Dunbar would like to consider this one separately.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So how would you like to vote on this one? On these four?
Yes.
Yes. Sheri, that's a yes.
Councilmember Garza? Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero on the Committee on Development and Planning, first four recommended budget priority.
All right. Now, item five, dealing with the LEAP subsidy. Um, is there further discussion on this? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
No.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
No. All right. Uh, thank you very much. That one passes, uh, six minus, eight minus two, six to two. Uh, next, that math right there, pretty good. Okay, so the next one relates to the Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. Uh, hey, look at that, it's Patricia Spitzley again, as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so, um, we have three, uh, funding priorities. Um, and the first one was, um, five hundred thousand dollars, which would, um, add, um, four FTE social workers in one FTE administrative assistant department to be determined. And, and that, that kind of comes out of some of the stuff that we're hearing about, um, some of the, uh, the outreach that needs to be done in the community that can be done um, absent, um, having either, um, a, 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 a police presence or, or an LFD presence. We've, we've heard on both sides where they have people that are regular callers to either the police department or the fire department. Um, and that there, you know, could be some sort of structure or mechanism to have some of, some of the, the outreach and the calls done outside of, um, an escalated situation. Um, and then the number two is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Lansing Police Department Officer Training, External Sources. Um, and this came about after, um, you know, our realization that I think less than two hundred thousand dollars right now is in the police department's training budget. I, I actually think it's about one fifty. Um, part of this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, though, would be, um, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, committee members, but part of this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we talked about bringing an external source in to kind of give an audit of, um, what's going on, um, policies, procedures. Um, you know, stops everything in the Lansing Police Department and provide recommendations back, um, to the police department. I'm, I, I, I'm sorry, is that, was there additional?
I don't recall that part of it, but maybe.
Okay, that's what I said.
Um, I do know that the committee discussed that we wanted it to be not in-house training, um, because we did, we discovered through the, through the budget analysis with our CSO, that was about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in training in. And while we talk about the, the amount of training that our officers go through, that didn't seem like that much, uh, you know, we spent fourteen hundred bucks on one training session for the eight of us. So I, you know, that, that's not, that didn't seem like a lot for us. So we're looking at making, doubling that again, and then making sure that it's done by external actors, um, and council.
Right. But I, I did think we, we also talked about a review of policies and procedures, but two hundred and fifty, but increasing the, the, the officer training budget. No matter what. And then the third one, um, was the hiring of a, um, full-time grant writer. Uh. And then, um. Is engaged on with the sole responsibility of assisting, um, these local outreach groups. Um, it's saying my internet connection is unstable, so if I, if I fall off, I'll try to call back in. Um. In organizations, in grant research, writing, and monitoring so that they can continue to do the outreach that they're doing now, but that the City of Lansing provides them with, um, assistance so they can do grant writing. And so those are the three, uh, pri- priorities from diversity, equity, and inclusion.
The part that Patricia Spitzley's mic cut off on was, we didn't specify specifically which, um, department, but whether it was DNCE or HRCS, there was discussion about either department might make some sense. Um, so we put that in the priorities to leave that to the administration if they fund this to where they want it, where it makes the most sense.
Thank you for that. My, my internet was flickered out for a moment there. Um, Councilmember Dunbar, was there anything else I missed on that that you recall?
I just remember that I was pretty adamant, I don't want the social workers housed in the police department. And, um, and so when it says department to be determined, I would like it to say not in the police department. Um, and the, the two hundred fifty thousand dollars for training, when it says external sources, I absolutely agree, external sources, but I also don't want that training in the, um, LPD budget. And I thought we had, I know that there was some confusion in the way that that was portrayed in the media, um, but I wanted to clarify that before we vote, that this is, we're not talking about, um. Putting social workers, for me, funding for that in the police department.
So, uh, we'll take that one separately, but you had mentioned that you don't think the police department training budget should go in the police department budget. So how would you put that as a funding?
Um, I wanted the implicit bias training and the de-escalation training and, um, other stuff like that. I don't know, I don't care where department it is, I don't care if it, I mean, we do trainings through HRCS, not through HRCS, through Human Resources. Um, I don't, I, I don't know. I mean, you can envision it how you want, I just, I don't, um, I don't think implicit bias training should be taught by a member of the police department.
Right, okay, so but but you're okay with the, with the resources for external training to go through the cost center for which it's dedicated, correct?
How do we make sure that it's, it's, once it becomes administrative, it becomes administrative? So.
Yeah, well, as we've been, we, this is also a wish list, as I've said, but it also, Jim will tell you, not a mandate to a spend, I also, so so that's my confusion there is I, I think by putting in the police department budget, you've made it very clear that this is where we want the training to be done, otherwise it's a citywide asset.
And I, I, I get, I get, I think I get where you're going, Councilmember Dunbar. I mean, I've read the the articles too, and, you know, if we're talking about reimagining or the, the, the move is to reimagine or defund the police department, adding additional money in the police department budget for training or whatever, kind of flies in the face of the defunding. I I get that, um, but also, but also, if we're trying to be different and reimagine, you know, and we're trying to do it through training, it's gotta go somewhere. I'm just trying to figure out where, where else would it go? And you're saying through HRCS or somewhere else, I, I don't really care. Again, like Peter said, as long as we're directing, you know, we're, we're trying to facilitate change and renewal and reimagining, um, you know.
Right, for me, I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, for me.
Go ahead, you're fine.
I misspoke when I said HRCS, I really meant Human Resources. Um, because that's where most training budgets come from, um, at least for us, so that was my thought.
Okay, so I've got some hands up from council members, um, like I said, from, well, I'll move on, Councilmember Garza, then Councilmember Betts. Or, no, Garza, just put us down.
Oh, I'm, I'm here, I just, okay, all right, not tonight. So, thank you, House President. So I guess that was my question is, you know, if we're gonna be, uh, supporting two hundred fifty thousand dollars for external training, you know, where's it gonna go? You know, obviously, it's gonna go to help the police department. So to me, it doesn't really matter what, what department it goes to, as long as they get the additional training. Now, with a five hundred thousand dollars for four, uh, social workers, I mean, it says to be determined, so we're gonna allocate those funds and then we're gonna find out later where it's gonna go?
Well, so, no, let me, if I can summarize what's happened so far. So the discussion in the committee, the EDI committee, um, there was discussion between embedded in the police department and not embedded in the police department. And there wasn't really a resolution on it as we moved it out of committee. It was TBD, because Councilmember Dunbar had expressed some strong desire not to have it in the police department. Um, there was some expression of, from committee members that maybe embedded was the way to go. There was not a determination made, and we had a committee meeting that had to get canceled before we came back to that discussion. So that's why there's a TBD. I am, as, as a member of the committee, I'll tell you that if we say not in the peace, police department, I would support that. Um, I'm less inclined to support something that says we're gonna put a training budget in the HR for the police department, because even our budget has a training line item in it, so it's not like, uh, doesn't make sense. But at this point, we're not actually allocating any resources, Jeremy, as well. This is not about actually setting a budget, although it kind of is, but we're not setting an actual budget, we're just letting the administration know what our spending priorities would be as they, as they put together their budget that they will present to us early next year. That's why there's a little bit of ambiguity on some of the stuff, because it's like, we don't know, we don't have the right staff to really make that analysis, so these are the, we wanna, we wanna spend this much, you figure it out, how would, how would operationalize? It's kind of how these things are, 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 are being done.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Betts?
Thank you, I have two things. The first is, I would like to offer a friendly amendment on the first to say that that department is the fire department. I will not vote for, uh, budget priority that increases the police department budget. Can we, uh, make that change, or are we gonna continue to have this to be decided? Yes, Pat?
Oh, uh, why don't we just say, um, why don't we just, why don't we just create a, a, an, an office and put the social workers in an office of neighborhood safety or something for right now? And that's our recommendation. And, you know, if he ends up, you know, because, because that's really, you know, when we, when we talk about it, then they can free flow back and forth between police and fire. I know that that's not the, um, preferred method, I get that. Um, but at this point, you know, I don't want, I, I, you know, I, I don't want it not to be voted on because it's going to a particular department. We need social workers, we, we need social workers, more social workers, period. Um, and we need them both in fire, and we need them in police, and we probably need them in HRCS as well. So I, I, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to get, um, you know, I'm trying to convey to the administration that we, we need to invest in more social workers. And so.
I, um.
I don't care at this point, but as long, because, and if that makes you comfortable, I'm okay with that, too.
That makes me comfortable if we have a third, whatever we wanna call it, I just wanna make sure specifically. Uh, the second thing that I have to say, this is a brief statement, uh, training does not dismantle white supremacy in police departments, that has been shown, that has been studied. I wish that we would go beyond that, because that is not transformative change in our police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Um, Councilmember Hussein? Oh, muted, sir.
I said, I'll be brief. I know the hour is already late. I was going to reiterate so that you were the only one, um, saying it, that we have to remember that this is essentially a wish list. And I think the power of this, um, is obviously we are signaling to the administration what some of our priorities are, but if they do not, and we've talked about this, um, in years past, if they do not include these, then they have to come back, uh, and explain why, right? Or, um, if they do, um, include some of these priorities, um, but maybe they've included them in ways we didn't necessarily intend for them to be included, we obviously have the power as a body to amend that recommended executive budget. So this is just kind of a, a starter, right? Um, in terms of conversations, in terms of their process. Um, I, I did wanna thank the committee. I think that these three in particular, I think, are, are pretty responsible of some of the things that, uh, some of the concerns, I should say, that have been conveyed to this body, uh, from, you know, myriad individuals and groups out in, in, in our communities. So I really appreciate this, uh, particularly, I think, the social worker aspect. Um, and regardless of, of where it's housed, um, you know, I don't know that four gets us to where we need to be. I, I hear the magic number is six, but again, this is simply, simply a, a conversation starter. Uh, but in order to have that twenty-four, seven presence of a, a social worker that can respond, um, to calls and, and, and really work on crises and things of that nature, uh, whether that be individuals, whether that be with our public, um, safety first responders, um, you know, this, I think, gets us closer. And we know that, um, council, you know, President Spatafor, myself, and a number of others, uh, have worked with our social worker, have shadowed our social worker, they absolutely need that administrative assistance, so I appreciate that. And then with number three, in terms of the grant writer, I really appreciate that as well. We have some really good nonprofits, um, you know, locally doing some incredible things. However, they do often talk about how difficult it is, um, to navigate kind of the, the accessibility of, I should say, the accessing of, um, some of those grant dollars that are out there. We do know that there are a lot of grant dollars out there, uh, but not always, um, do these nonprofits have experienced grant writers that are part of their boards and things of that nature. So I appreciate this. I also, and I don't know if this was part of the conversation, um, of the committee, but I also view this a little bit, um, this position as somebody that can, um, you know, kind of bring nonprofits together, coordinate, um, you know, kind of, um, that collective response from our nonprofits, kind of inventory, um, what services are being offered by our nonprofits, you know, ensure that there aren't redundancies, and maybe making sure that, you know, some of the gaps, um, you know, in terms of services are, are potentially filled as well. So again, appreciate this, I will be supporting all of these, and I just wanted to, uh, discuss publicly why. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Dunbar, then Councilmember Wood.
Hi, um, Patricia, I really like that idea of having an independent department. My only concern with that, and the reason that we talked about possibly fire, is because if they, if they are deployed, the infrastructure right now of the nine-one-one call center doesn't go to an outside source. So if a social worker needs to be called to a scene, it's gotta be within somebody that's already within the infrastructure of nine-one-one for now, um, until we rebuild that. So that's the only reason I was leaning towards the fire department. And if it's possible, we know that, going on to number two, that two hundred and fifty thousand, I think it was a hundred and thirty. It was, it was a low number, um, of what was existing in the budget. I would not have a problem with taking the additional amount, like, saying, because we're, we're saying put two fifty in there, but we're really not, we're just adding a hundred and twenty. So we could say that the additional police training of a hundred and twenty, um, could be housed somewhere else. I would be fine with that, if that's, um, amenable.
Well, um, I'm gonna push back a little bit. Um, I, amen to the fire department, I think because the infrastructure is there, I, I would be reticent to say, let's create a whole new division, a whole new department without any infrastructure to support it whatsoever. So no, no objections from this committee member. I thought we were talking two hundred fifty thousand additional funding on top of the hundred and thirty thousand that was there, but if that, if I misunderstood, then, um, I, 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 I don't, I care, but I'm not, I don't wanna fight over it. So that's, I don't wanna ma- make clear what we're recommending to as a budget priority. Is it two fifty or one thirty plus one twenty?
Pat, do you remember?
I think it was a two fifty plus, but.
Well, in that case, I have no problem saying external to the police department, because what they're already doing with the one thirty is within the police department.
Okay. Um, let's move on, and then we'll come back to the actual language. Uh, Carol, Councilmember Wood, excuse me.
Thank you. Um, and, and the first one, if all you did was strike the, the department to be determined, um, again, this is, uh, the fact that we're saying we believe that we need to have, um, four social workers that are helping the city. Um, when it comes back to the budget, when we receive the budget, if it's, if they are placed in places that we're not satisfied where they're going, we have the opportunity at that time to move it around. So that would, I, I think the easiest fix is just to take off apartments to be, the department to be determined. Um, as far as, um, the police department, you know, I, I, um, I'm not sure why we aren't keeping the training there, if that's what we're looking at, is training for the police department. Um, and, and again, um, you know, you've put in here external sources, so I think there's ways around that, again, if they comes back to us, um, in a budget proposal, and we ask them to list those trainings, if it's things that we don't agree with, we can make recommendations at this time, um, at that time. So those are, are my couple of two cents on those.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Um, Councilmember Betts?
I would like to push back on Councilmember Wood just a little bit. I think that, uh, our budget priorities also show our values in, uh, on council, and I think that part of our values here, if we truly do believe in reimagining public safety, is to make sure that we request that those social workers go somewhere else, because if they are going to the police department, then that's not doing what we're trying to do here, that's just adding more social workers to the police department, which I think that Kathy has already said that she doesn't want to have, Pat's already talked about, uh, wanting something different, Peter said wanting to have it in the fire department, and I too think that this is important, that we put this in the fire department. So I think that if we put fire department, it'd be pointing to our values more than if we're to just say that we want social workers, because that's, that's all I have to add. Um, if anybody else wants to, uh, add to that or not, that's fine.
Uh, Councilmember Jackson, and then Councilmember Betts, I do see your, um, I, I see your hand is still up, I'm not sure if that's left over or not, but I'll come back to you if, if so. Councilmember Jackson?
Just really quickly, as far as the training part, so my understanding is that LPD already has a training budget. I think the question is, what do they spend it on? Is it on the newest tactical, um, you know, moves when it comes to urban warfare, or is it bias training? And at first, I thought bias training, all that, all that, yes, 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 do it, de-escalation, do it, do it, do it, inherent bias. But the more that I educate myself, I'm tending to kind of agree with Brandon about there's no real correlation that these type of trainings really correlate to less bias. Um, I mean, it is worth having, but my point is, is that I'm a little hesitant to just increase the, the training budget that much when there is training, it's just LPD has to choose what they wanna spend it on.
Hey, uh, Councilmember Dunbar?
Maybe that was my hand that was still up. I, I'm, I'm just gonna reiterate the fire department for the social workers, I even want the one that's already embedded to be in the fire department. But as, I mean, this is correct, since we voted on this in committee, the more studies I've seen, that training doesn't change personalities. And so, you know, the, the idea maybe, and maybe we can't envision this right now, is we pull the darn additional training thing out of the budget priorities right now, and, um, and consider what that money could be spent on, which is maybe, um, better recruitment process for, for police officers. But I, I'll let you guys hash that out.
So we are out of hands at the moment. So what I would recommend is, um, because it is seven thirty, um, and this is very important work, so I'm not gonna try and rush us at all, but it sounds like we do have consensus around more social workers, there is a little bit of consternation, not, there's a lack of consensus around the department, but we seem to have a majority that might go for the fire department. Um, so I would ask the Chair of the Committee to make a motion on item one, which would be five hundred thousand dollars for four FTE social workers, one FTE administrative assistant to be in the fire department. That was you, Patricia? If you're amenable to that motion.
I know. Um, I, I, I'll, 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 I'll accept that at this point. I think that, again, the recommendation, um, is that we need more social workers. Um, and the recommendation to the administration, I think the message is loud and clear about the need for social workers. At the end of the day, um, there needs to be a, a longer conversation about where they, where they are housed. I do think there is value to having some social workers within the police department. I think we need to, and I'm just gonna say it, I think we need to be careful here. I want to, um, make the decisions based on making the police department better, um, making them more responsive, and keeping them accountable. I am not interested to cut just to cut so that we say we've cut the police department, because, you know, that is also going to result in less services and less safety for people who need safety. And so I want us to be, I want us to be careful about this. Um, so I will move the amendment for five hundred thousand dollars for four FTE social workers, one administrative assistant to be housed in the fire department at this point.
Thank you, and I will still maintain, uh, order. So I see that Councilmember Betts, you unmuted, would you like to be recognized? Okay. Um, all right, so is there further discussion on the priority that is in front of us? Seeing none, Cherry, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes. All right. And Councilmember Spitzley, I heard a lack of consensus on the training. So perhaps it's best if we move on to the grant writing.
Yes, I, I agree. So, and again, and I thank you guys for this committee. You guys have been done great. So thank you, Councilmember Dunbar, and thank you, Councilmember Spatafor. You guys have done really good work. I really deeply appreciate it. So number three, one twenty-five for the FT grant writer that'll either be housed in the neighborhood citizens engagement or HRCS that will assist local groups and organizations in grant writing, grant research and monitoring.
Motion before us is, as stated by the committee chair, is there further discussion on this item? Seeing none, if the clerk would please call the roll.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. All right. So lacking.
Councilmember President Spatafor? I would like to retract the two hundred and fifty for the police department training at this point and maybe have it for a continued, I mean, I, I want, have it for continued discussion, maybe in our committee, but keep it as it is at the amount as it is and just kind of remove this one.
Okay. Yeah. So lack of a vote on that means it won't be recommended to council. So we'll just move on to the next committee. Thank you for your work on that, the last two committee chairs, Spitzley. All right. The next one is the Committee on General Services and for the life of me, I can't remember who the chair is. So Vice President Hussein, if you want to take these.
That would be me. Inappropriate, right? When we look at these additions, they really are kind of small potatoes comparatively speaking. We, you know, we just had a couple of what we thought were, you know, pretty common sense additions to our priorities list. The first pertains to our boards and commissions here in the city of Lansing. We have a number of those boards and commissions that are organized and called for upon in the charter and obviously via ordinance. And we know that when it comes to ethics ordinance, when it comes to conflict of interest policies and the Open Meetings Act, that those apply to respective members as well as to those collective bodies. And so you know, everybody knows right from Councilwoman Wood's line of questioning. We take a look at potential appointees to these respective boards that they have not historically received. Even if the offer has been there, they have not restored, sorry, historically received the necessary training. And so what we are, first of all, and I'm not going to get in a lengthy conversation here about this, but right now in general services, we are taking a look at it. We were first looking at an ordinance. Now we're looking at a resolution of policy to actually require that this training take place for our boards and commissions. So that being said, what we were hoping to do was to signal to the administration that we want to see training modules developed on, on the ethics ordinance, conflicts of interest policies, as well as the Open Meetings Act. And we would like the money for the development of those training modules to be positioned in the Department of Law. So with that, that is that one. And then the second one, you know, this was, this was brought forward by Councilwoman Wood and I really appreciated this addition. As we kind of, you know, move as a municipality, you know, into this kind of paperless, you know, environment world. We certainly don't want to proceed that path and leave a certain segment of our, our population behind. And so this was brought forward again by Councilwoman Wood. She wanted to see some money set aside in the budget for printing costs to provide written materials to residents who do not have access to computers, do not have access to internet or cell phones with document capability. Again, that was brought forward by Councilwoman Wood. We appreciate that. If there are questions pertaining to that particular one, I would defer to Councilwoman Wood, but I, but again, I think these are pretty just common sense additions.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I will take that as a motion for the two items. Is there any discussion on these two items from the Committee on General Services? Seeing none, if the clerk would please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you very much. The next item is the Committee on Inner Government Relations and that committee did not need to formulate government or budget priorities. So we will not pass those along to city council. Following that is the Committee on Public Safety chaired by Councilmember Garza. Yes, Councilmember Garza. I got a lot up here. I can't always remember everything.
President, so what we have before you is three resolutions. One would be, so as, as you see that Mayor Shore announced Operation Slow Down, it's a program designed to reduce speeding and reckless driving throughout the neighborhood streets. Now, I know I have, and I'm sure the rest of the council members have had constant calls about people driving down, wanting to do a traffic study, whether it's a stop sign, traffic circle or speed bumps. So I propose is eleven thousand dollars for traffic speed wagons. Mr. Kilpatrick stated the Public Service Department used to have four, which no longer work and the LPD currently has two. So the traffic speed wagons are approximately fifty five hundred dollars. So I would like to earmark eleven thousand dollars for those, for two more traffic speed wagons for the Public Service Department. And also ten thousand dollars to be earmarked for portable speed bumps in the Public Service Department as well. So they're approximately a thousand dollars apiece. You're going to need one on each side of the street. Or for vehicles going north, vehicles going south. I figured that we should buy a handful of them. And that should hopefully curb some of the, some of the speeding down our residential streets. And last but not least, I want to earmark a hundred and forty thousand dollars. This actually was brought to me by Patricia Spitzley, which I also talked to the Fire Board of Commissioners as well. And I know Chief Mackey, this is something he was working on prior to him exiting the city. So a hundred and forty thousand dollars allocated to reinstate the Lansing Fire Department's cadet program. And so that would be housed within Lansing Fire Department, a better pathway for our residents in Lansing to have a career in the public safety field. So I think Chief Mackey estimated that a hundred and forty thousand is what roughly it would cost per year to, to reallocate that, to reinstate that apprenticeships or cadet program. And that's where it's at. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My computer's freezing here. Hold on. There we go. So I will take that as a motion for those three items. Is there, I see discussion. So we'll go with Councilmember Hussein first.
Yeah, just very quickly, I wanted to thank the committee with regards to number three. We've had, you know, conversations about this internally for a very long time. The numbers that we were given to reinstate that program were much higher. So the fact that, you know, we actually had conversations with Mackey to put this in place. I really appreciate that. I think it's imperative. Number one, with regards to the traffic speed wagons, what I like, we know that we have a major issue in our neighborhoods and I'm really concerned that some of our young people, you know, are at risk and could be hit and that, and that type of thing. Sorry. And, and what I like about speed trailers is their objective, right? The, the only concern I have right now, the, the traffic speed wagons that we have seem to simply encourage, you know, folks to, you know, speed through the neighborhoods and see how high they can get the radar to go. So I wonder if, and you can use this in any way you want, whether you want to send warnings, whether you wanted to, you know, wanted to, want to use it, sorry, to issue citations. But I wonder if we want to include language where we'd like to see traffic speed wagons with license plate recognition. Because if we're going to actually have them be impactful, I think we have to have that in there. Now, those are a little bit more pricey. But, you know, and again, maybe law can, you know, discuss a little bit about whether or not we can even issue citations. I'm certain we can issue warnings, but whether or not we can issue citations based on license plate recognition, speed trailers, but I just think that would be more effective. So again, I just wanted to bring that up.
I'm going to actually, I think Carol, you're probably going to address this. I do believe license plate reading technology may be illegal in the state of Michigan, but Mr. can probably address that more plainly. For the purposes of this conversation, we might not need to know the answer to that question, but it, that I'll open up the discussion, but Brandon, Councilmember Betts, you had a hand up.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Thank you, Councilmember Hussein for that point. You know, I, I think that when, when it comes to the speed wagons, and that, that's one reason why I was thinking about the speed bump budget. Councilman Garza, did you get a number on how many of those speed bumps would be purchased with ten thousand dollars? I forgot if you had said something.
So they, they, they vary in the cost depending on the width of the road. So I'm just putting in a thousand dollars at the high end and that would be for one set. So, so probably more like we'd end up with five sets or, you know, yeah, so one, actually one, and I'm not sure how big of a road this estimate is for. This is just a rough estimate. So I'm hoping that we would be able to have enough speed bumps for two to four streets.
If, if the will of the council is there, I would be interested in even bumping that number up more. And on the east side, every street wants a speed bump. So having a lot of these would be a really good thing from my perspective. So I don't know if we want to think about maybe doing twenty, thirty, if anybody else has a feeling on that. Otherwise, again, I realize that these are just priorities and a wish list. So I don't want to bog us too much down with the exact numbers on this.
I would, I would encourage us to move on to the next bit of item, just because it's, it's clear that Operation Slow Down is, is a priority for the administration and we're now in signaling it is as well for us. So I would, I think the number would be almost irrelevant at this point. Let them see what it needs to be. My personal opinion, but just to move this on really. Councilmember Wood?
A couple of things. First of all, we've had recommendations or opinions from the city attorney's office that we were looking at cameras for stoplights and that you can't issue in the state of Michigan tickets that way. We could issue warnings, letters and things like that, based off that. And you could do that with a reader. Councilmember Betts, the speed bumps that we're talking about are portable, that would be able to be moved around. Neighborhood could apply for these for the spring through the fall. And then once you have traffic patterns that have changed, then hopefully by putting it in another neighborhood, you know, you will have created people looking at it a different way. And they, traffic, these traffic humps that we looked at were anywhere from two hundred and thirty dollars up to a thousand dollars. So it would vary and that was just going online. I'm sure the fact that being purchased through the city, we might end up with a better deal. So we might end up with more of them based on that. So those are the information that I, we have on those. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So there was the, did, did we want to change that? Or I think, I think we've made it clear, Councilmember Hussein, that that's what we're talking about. So we can move on unless anyone has a strong objection, because I don't know if we want to sit here and play with the numbers and try to figure out how much an automated speed reader or a speed trailer is. But if, if, if we're all good with that, I think I would call the question on this, on this issue and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
So with no changes on the original document, correct?
That is correct. There is some intention that has changed, but it's been made clear.
Okay, good. That's what I had to. Thank you. Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
All right. We're going to move on to the Committee on Public Service, but I will remind folks that are tuning in, we are still in the middle of our Committee of the Whole meeting, dealing with our budget priorities. The city council will begin a few minutes after we adjourn the Committee of the Whole and finish the business of that committee. Committee on Public Service, if I could call on Councilmember Dunbar.
You can call on me. So this is not actually how I anticipated seeing these in the budget priorities because what we had done in committee is we received the budget priorities from the, the Public Services Board. So these are citizens who serve our community and, and this is their list of priorities that they put together and, and in the past, we have attached these to the priorities. So my apologies, and, and I guess you knew this when you put it in Council President Spatafor, but they don't fit.
No, and that was, that was a lack of communication from my office to whomever, to Sherry. So we can put, we can put these at the tail end as the Public Service Board's recommendations, because I recall now that Public Service basically said we've got what we need from the Public Service Board. So.
Right, right. So, so that, so I guess to Sherry, however you want to redo these, this is, this is very consistent with the last paragraph of these priorities, which are generalized priorities without cost. But we didn't get a, we didn't get costing from the Public Services Board. But I like to honor the work that they did and include that work in the budget priorities because they, they have great recommendations and they do, they do a lot more detailed work than we give many of our boards credit for. So these are, these are included and I guess you can choose to vote Council President, how you'd want to, if you want to tack them on at the end, or if we want to vote on them, but that's up to you.
Traditionally, what we've done is, is basically, correct me if I'm wrong, everyone else, we've just rubber stamped the Public Service Board's recommendations and not altered them. So it would be my suggestion that the, the resolution that heads to the council has them just tacked down as the end, as, as presented from the Public Service Board, not the Public Service Committee. And I don't see any objections to that, but I do see some discussion from Councilmember Betts. So I would like to recall on him.
I, I have two priorities that I just copied from the Public Service Board into the Committee of the Whole. Two of my Committee of the Whole priorities and those are increasing the sidewalk repairs and local street repair funding, but I put some specific numbers to that. So I'm wondering if we should move those with the particular itemized numbers, put them into the Public Service Boards or recommendations or.
I think, in my opinion, they should be in both places if they're adopted in both places because the Public Service Board is a separate entity and we've, I don't know why, but we've always done it this way. And out of respect to that process, I'd like to keep theirs unaltered.
Okay, great.
So we'll do that and then move on to the next one. Councilmember Wood, if you'd like to address Committee on Ways and Means?
Thank you. Our budget priorities, actually, we don't believe have a cost to them other than the things that we are currently doing. What we're asking is encouraging the administration to focus on budget allocations and centralization, centralizing the fees and costs associated with items such as information, technology, utilities, et cetera. We had quite the discussion and have for the last two years on the IT department and how those were allocated. And to justify those. So what we're asking is the department do, the administration do an analysis on that and be able to bring that back during the budget process so that we fully understand that. Item number two is encourage the chief strategy officer to perform an audit report on short and long term resolutions for the current forecast of the city's revenues and expenditures within all departments. And again, she's already on board, our chief strategy officer. One of the things that when we put this position in the budget before was the fact that they would be doing a top down with each department. And we've yet to see that, not that she, not to assume that they're not working on it, but council's not seeing that information yet. And we believe that that should be part of a budget process that when it comes forward, that those recommendations are in there with that. So I would move these two recommendations for the budget priorities.
Great, thank you. There is a motion before us and I do see some discussion. Councilmember Dunbar. You're muted, my friend.
Yeah, thank you. It's, I have to move my cursor back and forth between the document and the Zoom in order to get myself unmuted. Could I get a little more clarity on the, I, I don't disagree with any of this, but the performing audit report on resolutions to the current forecast of, what is the, what do you mean by the resolution for the forecast? Do you mean like to find ways to decrease expenditures and increase revenues or?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Any further discussion on the items from the Committee on Ways and Means? All right. So with that, I will call, have the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay. The final one before we move on to committee, the whole is just the sort of trailer language that's at the, that's at the end. These are basically funding priorities that have carried over, um, in different versions of this resolution. And I didn't want to completely abandon history or tradition. So I put them at the tail end for us to determine if they are still pertinent. Um, and they are maintain and improve the city's infrastructure, preserve and ensure clean, safe, well-maintained housing in neighborhoods, provide comprehensive and affordable recreational programs and youth and family services, and explore alternatives for improved efficiency and service and delivery. So this is saying that the council would continue its commitment if funding is available for those four items. Um, I will entertain a motion from councilmember Hussein for those.
Oh, moved.
Oh, moved. Is there discussion on those? Do they still comport with our beliefs, hopes, dreams and future? Very good. I'm seeing a lot of head nodding for those who are listening only. All right. Um, seeing no further discussion on those, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Very good. So we are going to move on to this body. Um, and let me just make my, my announcement again, the housekeeper, if you will. Um, for those of you who are tuning in and expecting a rip roaring fun adventure in city council time, this is still the committee of the whole. Uh, we, our time has run over, but we're working on our budget priorities and we have one more item after that, after which time we will take a brief recess and bring, uh, the committee back, uh, bring the city council to order. So, uh, you haven't missed your opportunities for public input on city council. We are just still finishing up our previous committee meeting, which began at five. All right. So, um, we have for us from, excuse us, now before us, we are going to take items that individual council members may wish to propose as part of the committee, the whole recommendations. And the only ones that made it into the resolution as a proposal, uh, were from councilmember Betts. So councilmember Betts, I will call on you to, um, uh, address your, uh, four priorities.
Thank you. I, I think that it would be best to take these one at a time, obviously, because they're all very different. So the first, uh, I will give a brief summary and then I want to read some words for you. Um, the, the first is obviously coming from a long discussion that I've been having with the community and all of us have been having, uh, community for a long time to divest 10% or 4.6 million dollars from the LPD operating and, uh, personnel budgets. I see this as a potential bloat in the police department. And I think that we need to divest and reinvest in places where we will make our city safer. So specifically, I want to hire six FDE social workers within LFD. We've already talked about this in another budget priority. But again, the reason for this budget priority in particular is because I'm showing where this money is going to go from the police department. I think that we need a robust social worker department of some kind. And I think that that would be best held, uh, $480,000. I want to allocate a million, a million dollars of the 4.6 million dollars to create a new fund specifically for youth education and employment services. Conversations with everybody around Lansing and every ward, I have heard one thing that in the nineties and the eighties, we had these great youth employment programs and these great youth education programs that we have just cut over time. I think that is now time to reinvest in our youth, especially in, in the case where we see, uh, news recently came out that black youth are three times as likely to be arrested by the police than white youth. I think that we need to take those black youth and instead of arresting them for, uh, minor crimes. So I think that we need to be reinvesting in them and making them better citizens, more educated citizens, and people who are ready to face society and work within society as opposed to over policing them. Um, the second piece of this is a little bit more broad, and I wanted to discuss very briefly. The 3.12 million into a newly created fund specifically to address the recommendations from the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Now, when I put together my resolution that Kathy signed on to, uh, or I guess we both, we both put this forward, sorry Kathy. Um, one thing that we felt was very important was that the, this council specifically look at ways to reinvest in the future. And one thing that I've heard from Peter and Pat very specifically on this thing is that they want a method to move forward. They want to figure out a method to move forward. Now, what I would argue is that it is incumbent upon this council to dismantle, uh, racism and to make sure that we are the ones figuring out what this is moving forward. And I think that that 3.12 million, we can decide on before the mayor, um, executes his budget next March. And we can have an idea of what, uh, where, where we can put this money. Now, um, in the interest of lifting up black voices, because I do not feel like I'm the perfect person to speak to dismantling racism in the police department. I would like to read the words of Angela Waters Austin, who sent me something that she asked for me particularly to read on council. And it's, it's very short. It's about two par- three paragraphs long. I'll, I'll get through it pretty quickly here. It says, uh, this is again submitted by Angela Waters Austin, the co-founder of the Black Lives Matter Lansing. I'd like to thank councilmembers Brendan Betts, Kathy Dunbar, and Patricia Spitzley for your willingness to engage in dialogue about community safety and hear the concerns of those directly impacted by radicalized policing and racialized, I apologize. Police were created as patrols to terrorize black people into submission. The culture of criminalizing black people and anti-black violence persists centuries later. Increased funding and training for police has only led to increased militarization without accountability for misconduct and murder. From brutalizing teenage girls in distress to gassing protesters, the Lansing Police Department has demonstrated right transformation is mandatory. Black Lives Matter Lansing understands that the purpose of protest is policy transformation. We have exercised our First Amendment rights to protest the police that feed our children into the carceral system. We have also begun to, the work of engaging our neighbors and determining what actually makes community safe. In July and August, the community convened assemblies to establish priorities for Lansing People's Budget. The top priorities are, one, defund the police and invest in funds and community organizations for community programs, mental health help and preventative measures. Two, ensure livable wages for all who may, who, to meet basic needs. Three, create systems that promote and encourage wealth building. It is long overdue that Lansing recognizes that racism is a public health emergency. Having done so, it is expected that the budget will prioritize an emergency response and sustain that response until the problem is solved. Arguments that the status quo should be maintained in policy and practice are arguments for maintaining structural racism. The erasure and silencing of those who experience the violence of racism must come to an end. There's been incorrectly argued in public comment that the voices to defund the police are the few. The largest global movement in the history of the world is the evidence that those who believe in racial justice are the majority. A 10% reinvestment from the police to address the root causes of crime and violence is the beginning of the transformation. Invite city council to listen to the community and joy, join us in reimagining public safety. With that, I will, I will take the time to answer any questions, or of course, we can just move ahead and vote on this. And I'd like to thank Angela very specifically for giving those words, because I feel like we need to be highlighting the words of black people and especially black women in this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Will I take that as a motion on your, uh, number one priority?
Yes, I would move to adopt the first budget priority listed under the city or committee of the whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Garza?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Councilman Betts, um, I heard you say the pers- percentage of people of color getting pulled over, over, uh, I guess over Caucasians. Now, wh- what's a percentage on that again?
Yeah. So there's, so there's two, there's two different statistics. The first one is that I cited in, in what I was saying before was 70% of arrests of youth in Lansing are black youth. That is coming out of the Lansing State Journal this week. The other one is, uh, I believe that people of color in Lansing, this is from the city polls. They looked at the, uh, data provided by the Lansing Police Department on pullovers and arrests from pullovers. Um, I believe that it is black residents are three times as likely to be pulled over than white residents. And there are two times as likely to be pulled over by re- white residents. And once pulled over, black motorists are three times as likely to be arrested, uh, after, as a result of that pullover. So that, and those are just Lansing statistics. We can talk about national statistics, statistics all we want. But obviously I'm, I'm most interested in Lansing here when we're having this conversation.
I am as well. And, you know, I'd also like to see, you know, why they were arrested, you know, was it priors? Um, I mean, so these numbers, I mean, without seeing the data, I mean, doesn't really mean too much to me. But, um, yeah, and that's what my second question was, is see if this was Lansing or this is a national. So appreciate.
Yeah, the, yeah, those two statistics that I was giving were Lansing specifically. And I'll, remind me after this, I'll send you the, the articles. They're very interesting read.
Thank you, Councilman Garza. Further questions or discussion? Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. Um, so there is something to what councilperson Betts and a lot of people are calling for. I mean, just look at Lansing's situation. Lansing's police department budget is so much, it's like so large. I know a lot of it goes to, uh, salaries and all that stuff, but it's so large that, you know, there's millions of dollars there. So what can we do to, to, to make their, the police's job easier? Like, how can we take some of those things away, like some of their responsibilities, so that they have less to do and therefore would arguably need less of that money to do it in? So, um, all of the studies is kind of pointing towards investing in the community. And I think there's, when you take some of that money, there is a lot of different ideas to do that. I'll have one proposal, but I just want to say like, the 10% is a number. It's out there. Um, I'll support it in this vote, because I do think it is important to kind of try to, to invest in our community. And there's ways to do it, but I just, I just want to say, don't just, I don't think that people should ignore this call, because it could help our city in a few ways. It could save, it could save us money. It could save the police a harder job in the future and it could just lift our people up. So let's try to find something.
Councilmember Hussein, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Jackson, are you finished? Thank you. Councilmember Hussein?
Appreciate those, uh, count, uh, comments, Councilman Jackson. I think, you know, when we've, we've had some just very initial conversations regarding divestment. Um, you know, because obviously, uh, you know, we have this national, uh, conversation. We have had state and local conversations. Um, and, and I think what I've seen, regardless of where people are positioned, you know, when we talk about either side of the fence, is that everybody is absolutely, um, supportive of, of making sure that we are, whether that be reimagining, whether that be strengthening, enhancing, whether that be transforming, uh, you know, our public safety, um, response, so that it is the absolute most appropriate response. Um, I, I'm a little confused, uh, regarding this particular, um, uh, priority, only because there's also a resolution, um, that is in front of the, uh, di- diversity, equity and inclusion committee. And so the most actionable, when we talk about this, uh, declaring public, um, or I'm sorry, racism is a public health crisis. The most visible, uh, you know, and I think tangible piece of that resolution was we created a new committee to take a look at these things. And so my understanding is that they, this week, this Wednesday, are actually going to have a committee meeting where that is the only agenda item. And so they, um, at this point, I believe, will actually start working, um, through that resolution. Uh, that resolution, obviously, part of it is to, um, create an ad hoc committee, um, on public safety transformation. And then that, uh, committee would ultimately, uh, come up with a report of sorts. Uh, you know, what does defunding look like? If we were to defund, where would that money come from? How would that affect the department? Where would that money go, et cetera, et cetera? So I'm confused. Does this mean, i- i- and I could be wrong, does this mean that that resolution is being pulled in favor of thi-? How does that work, Brendan? I guess I'm.
Thank you. That, that is a great question, Adam. And, and I see these things both going in tandem. So on, on the one hand, we need to ask the budget priorities today of the mayor. We need to move forward with that. On the side, on the other hand, you're right, this research needs to happen. We need to answer the question of where do we invest this money? And so the idea of the committee and the resolution is to put together a, the, the idea of the resolution is to put together a committee to then produce some research to give to the mayor to say, here is how we divest. And that's the reason why I, I took that 3.12 million of the 10% or of the 4.7 million. And I said, we should wait to hear what that committee comes forward with in terms of where do we reinvest this money? That doesn't mean that we shouldn't be asking today to divest that money, because we should, still should be doing the divestment piece. But we also need to be doing that investment piece as well. And that's the reason why, uh, again, at the end of it, I said that 3.12 million goes to the recommendations or whatever, the EDI committee. Or I, 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 in conversation with Pat, it sounded like we wanted to have a subcommittee of the EDI committee do this sort of stuff. But, uh, you know, it could be the ad hoc committee, something like that. But we need to, we need to show our values, right? We need to show the mayor what our values as a council are and where we stand on this issue. And if we stand, i- if we stand for this thing, then what he should expect from the council and what we should be giving him next is a way forward. Because I don't think that the mayor's office is necessarily going to find that way forward for us. I think that we as council are going to be able to, are going to need to make that decision. So I think, again, they both go in tandem together so that we can answer the reinvestment question and also divestment question at the same time. So, so thank you. I hope that answered that question for you.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts, Vice President Hussein. Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I, first of all, um, Councilmember Betts, I do appreciate the words, um, and, 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 and from everybody on council. I think for me, um, and you know me, I'm very, I'm, I'm very deliberate. Um, I just, I still continue to feel that, um, the, um, committee on diversity, equity and in inclusion is the best vehicle for this. I, I, I know you, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily, um, disagree with looking at ways to reimagine or reallocate funding. I, I just, I just want to make sure that we've looked at everything, we've asked all the questions and we've done our homework completely be, and then put forth, and it can be as part of your resolution, or it can be as part of a separate resolution. I would prefer it to be as part of your resolution, Councilman Betts. Um, the recommendations that, um, represent council. And I, and I don't think we have enough, I, I, I don't think we're there yet with this. I don't think that means that we don't, we don't all value looking at, um, reimagining or reinvesting. And, and I don't want that to come off as saying that, you know, if I vote no, and, and I'm going to vote no, I'm just going to tell you that, that that means that I'm not supportive of your, of what you want to do, because I am supportive. Generally, I'm supportive of looking at it. I just think that we need a little bit more time, um, to look at the ramifications of a, of a divesting of, of 10% of the budget.
Thank you for that, Pat. And I, and I understand your wariness and, and honestly, everybody is a little bit scared about this right now.
Councilmember Betts, I'm gonna.
Oh, sorry.
All right, yeah.
I figured it was time for an answer, but.
No, I, I don't know that she asked a question. So I'm going to move on to Councilmember Dunbar and then I'll call on you as well. Um, just out of respect for everyone's time. So Councilmember Dunbar, uh, Councilmember Spitzley, were you finished before I move on to Councilmember Dunbar? Very good. Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. I, um, I have several thoughts on this. And I, I agree that, that divesting and reinvesting is the path forward to reimagining. Um, the one thing that I will suggest, and this is after having looked at other budgetary issues with regard to the police department. And because I am concerned about, um, retiree systems and, and long-term liability issues. Um, and I know this is, I'm going to guess this isn't going to pass today. And so I'm saying this and I'm going to do it briefly and we're going to do this more in committee at some time. But I'm looking at a 10% reduction in active, um, accounts for operating the budget. Like right now, we know that of the police department budget, there's a chunk in there that's allocated to retirees. And I don't want to cut the retirees. Um, I want to cut the active, um, issues. So, so for me, moving forward, and I'm anticipating, and I'm sorry, Brandon, I, I'm going to vote for this, but I don't think it's going to pass tonight. Um, but, but moving forward, I would, I would really seriously look at separating out. I know that we don't do that in accounting, that we tie it all into the budget personnel, that everybody that, that works is paid, you know, is paying a certain amount, is budgeted a certain amount for legacy costs. But I would like to isolate out the legacy cost and really make a significant cut in, um, in the actual operating and personnel budget that does not tie to legacy costs. And I, and I, I wanted to make sure that we do that in the future. Um, but that said, I will support this tonight.
Thank you, Kathy.
Councilmember Betts?
Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate that. And, uh, Pat, going back to what I was saying, I understand that everybody's scared. I understand that this is a, this is a crazy thing. I understand that there needs to be more research. I understand that this is going on. But one thing that I do believe on this council is that our budget priorities are only a wish list of things that we want. As has been said multiple times here and there and there. Do I think the mayor is going to cut the police budget by 10%? No way. He is not interested in that. He's shown that he's not interested in that. Does that mean that this council should shy away from that and say, we're not going to support this? I don't think that we should. I personally think that council should support this idea because it is a wish list item. And if we can't get our research in order by March and the mayor decides to cut the budget by 10%, then we back off. Because we don't have the research. But right now is the. because we don't have the research. But right now is the time to set those priorities moving forward to say, this is the world that we want to see as council. And that is what I would like everybody to think about when they vote yes or no on this. Again, this is a value, this is a priority, this is not a budget line. So that's all I have to say, and thank you for allowing me to say that, President Spatafor.
Um, and I wasn't trying to stifle debate the last time. I just, I wanted to preserve the order of the.
You're good, no worries.
Okay, so I will say, um, I I really appreciate the work that you put into this. I sat through your budget um presentate your uh budget priority session you had with some constituents on Saturday morning, although told them I refused to turn my camera on because I hadn't done my hair and that would be, I think, scary for more public than seeing me with without my hair done. So but it was, it's very well thought out and I really appreciate it. But I I have said this um in the EDI committee and I'll say this this now. I support what you're trying to do. I support the notion of reimagining our police department. I support the demilitarization of our police department and bringing better public services to our residents, which is why I fervently hope that the mayor's office finds a way to include a beefed up social worker program in our city. I am concerned, um, and I know that others may share this and others may argue against my, what I'm about to say. I'm concerned that what we do if we simply just cut officers, we have this, we have fewer officers who still need to cover the shifts that are out there answering 85 to 100,000 calls a year until we change the mindset of our residents, until we provide them with an alternative to the police department, which is why tonight I will not be supporting this resolution, uh, this, I'm sorry, this component of the budget priorities. However, I am encouraged by the research that you've done and I am encouraged by the work that we're doing in the EDI committee to try and recognize the the intention behind this in front of you, which is why I'm supporting the social workers, when I'm supporting all the other stuff that we're trying to get done. I'm not ready to say we need fewer officers because it doesn't mean there'll be fewer officers on the street. It means there'll be the same number of officers on the street, but fewer people performing the duties, um, which is why I would not support a 10% cut to officers at this point in time. And I will, I will let you respond and then we're going to move on.
Thank you. The only thing I have to say to that is there's no way that we're going to ever find the money to reinvest in our community. The money just isn't there. We've got Prop A, we've got the Headley Amendment, we've got uh, we, so we've got lower property taxes, our income taxes aren't growing. We're at risk of worrying about all of this stuff. And as Brian said, 35% of our budget goes to police. On average, 25% of budgets around this, around the, all in cities, villages and townships go. We are way over budgeting our police in the city. And I understand your concerns and I hear them, and I think that we do need to change the hearts and minds, but that is, that is just a very broad statement, you know? We need to change the hearts and minds of our community before we can divest in the police department. Black people are dying today. Black people are being arrested today. Black people and all people of color worried about the police. I hear stories every single day about black families having to teach their children about racism and about how the police, when they come and see them, that they have to be very, very careful as to not get shot, as to not be seen as holding a weapon, as not being seen to do these things. And we have to, as a council, be thinking about dismantling racism. And this is the only way that we can dismantle racism in the police department because it is born out of white supremacy. And we have to, have to, have to start focusing on that in the future. If we do vote no on this thing, I really will hold every single one of you to account to say, in saying that you're going to do this in the future. But this future is not 10 years from now, the future isn't five years from now, the future isn't three years from now, the future is now. And we have to make these changes now. So thank you, and I'm, I'm ready for the vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. I appreciate it. Uh, Ms. Uh, Ms. Bo, Sherry, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hussein.
Adam, you you cut off there. I'm sorry. Could you please repeat your? That's a no, um, Sherry.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
No.
Councilmember Spatafor.
No.
Motion fails 5-3.
Thank you, uh, Sherry. Uh, Councilmember Betts, you have three more if you'd like to cover them.
Yep, we will go through these much quicker than that one. Thank you all for uh being here tonight and listening to the ideas that I have presented to council. So the next of these is um, a a full-time staff in the city attorney's office. I estimated that this could cost about $100,000 to focus specifically on housing and legal assistance for tenants and homeowners in the city. One complaint that I've heard on the east side a lot is that tenants are unable to reach somebody either at the, where we send them to the MSU Law Clinic or any external aid. And there are a lot of, as as Pat, I I love this word, recalcitrant landlords in town. We need to be able to address the problems with our landlords in town and make sure that our tenants are safe, that our tenants have the ability to uh figure out exactly the legal process that they need to take in a lot of different cases, especially now during COVID, when there's the questions of evictions going on and all that. I just believe that our tenants need more protections moving forward. And I think that one full-time attorney in the city attorney's office would be a really powerful force for good and also, again, show the priority of this council on uh tenants' issues and really helping tenants with those things. So with that, thank you very much for letting me say that.
Move the resolution or the um, it's been moved uh as this budget priority from Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Wood, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, when we had this discussion before, um, because this is a private action between a tenant and landlord that the city attorney's office has not been able to represent um tenants in these issues. That's why a position was created in HRCS, um, which currently Joe McDonald has. And uh, when this position was created, we were told that um someone with legal background would um hold that position and help tenants um with these issues. So I think the the question first needs to be is, can we legally have the city attorney's office do this? And um, if not, you know, then the question is, um, is there additional help that Joe needs in that position? Or are people versed enough to know that he has that position and there is an outlet for them? So if the city attorney could answer that question, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
It all depends on the scope of the duties. Uh, clearly, Councilmember Wood is correct that we can't represent private parties, but we can provide information. Uh, we do some of that work right now. I I know all of you council members send me neighborhood complaints generally involving usually rentals and landlords that uh we get involved with. So we could make it work, just as long as we don't get into, uh, we'd be violating the charter representing private individuals. But we could make, we could make it work if that's what ends up in the budget as best as we can. But but Councilmember Wood is correct on the last discussion.
Oh, my other question would be, don't you have a position currently unfilled in your office?
Yes, right now, but we're under a freeze.
Yeah, yes, but you do have a position and you are budgeted for that position.
Uh, I just looked at that this morning, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, some hope. Uh, Councilmember uh Spitzley.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I think that question has been answered. I wanted to, it it does say, um, you know, legal assistance um in his um budget priority. So, uh, you know, I agree, um, Councilmember uh Wood. I I I thought that the housing ombudsman was supposed to be able to provide, um, you know, that type of advice um, and with a legal background to help the residents. And so, um, but if that's not being done, I mean, in my perfect world, we would, we would pool those resources over and expand on the current um housing ombudsman. I mean, we need a housing, we have a housing ombudsman. I'm just not sure if that position has evolved to what we imagined. And I don't know what to do about that. So I'm going to support this because I think we need somebody. And if the current person that we have um doesn't have a legal background, I don't know if Joe does or not, but I think that providing advice or assistance without, you know, truly, and maybe, maybe it's just a law clerk. I don't know. Maybe you get out, maybe you get around that by having just a law clerk do it or, you know, so we get around having the city attorney's office do it. I don't care, but I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Well, and I'm going to call on myself too, before we go on, call on you, Councilmember Betts. Um, I have some information too from the um, like through HRS and through other departments where we do provide some legal assistance. So I'm going to support this with the understanding that we're going to, we're asking for some of these services and how it's accomplished maybe is open to interpretation. Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President. So for, I was actually going to say, yes, if if this legal assistance does come through other way, I just thought that the city attorney's office was a comfortable place to do this, but obviously they can't represent parties. Maybe this is an extension of the ombudsman uh position. Does the council feel like we should change that to put more money in the housing ombudsman office to make this more more legalese or should we continue to have this? Yes, Pat?
Can we just take out the attorney's office and just say hire one FTE to focus specifically on housing legal assistance? That way, it's not, you know, it's not, you know.
Yes, that sounds perfect.
I am comfortable with that. Thank you.
Sherry, you got that change?
Did.
All right, um. Let's see, I think that's all unless Brandon, your hand was up, but I think that was just from the last comment. So seeing no further discussion on this item, which is, which now reads, hire one FTE for $100,000 to focus specifically on housing legal assistance for tenants and homeowners in the city. Uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yep.
Motion carries eight zero.
Uh, next one, would you like to take these together, Councilmember Betts, since they're both infrastructure related?
Yeah, thank you, President Spatafor. I'm going to do that. So again, these two, the language was ported directly from the Public Services Board uh request for more funding. And I just put some budget numbers associated with this. Uh, let me, let me pull these up really quick. Again, these were just estimates based on prior year estimates. If somebody feels like these aren't enough or these are too much money, we can talk about that and change those in this committee. I'm totally. Um, however, the first is an increase from $200,000 to a total of, or an increase of $200,000 to a total of $500,000 for sidewalk repair. And then the second is for street repair. Again, this is not, to to clarify for the public, we have Act 51 funding that comes to the gas tax through the state that funds the roads. But we also have in the past allocated some money from our general fund budget to fix roads because this is a a dire need for our community and something that I think that every, every single ward member, every single council member has had these conversations with people on their streets. And I, I think that it's really important specifically, I really appreciate the Public Services Board, including the language to talk about underserved areas. I think that that is a a real priority, especially seeing as sometimes, uh, I mean, there are a lot of roads that are obviously haven't been touched. So um, with that, I I guess I would move uh item three, uh, the sidewalk repair to $500,000 first.
Hey, I will call on Councilmember uh Wood.
Councilmember Betts, since it is mentioned in the Public Service Board um recommendations, um, is there a real necessity to actually have an additional one here? I mean, um, we we are saying that we believe what the Public Service Board has said um, that that we as a body support. So I'm just wondering if both of these, um, but since you've moved just the one right now, um, since they are mentioned, you know, again here, if if it meets what you're trying to accomplish without necessarily having to put a dollar figure next to.
Uh, Peter, could you address that? You had said that you wanted to see.
Yeah, well, I had said that I didn't want to put um Councilmember Betts's um numbers in the Public Service Board. I want to leave them unstamped. One, one different concern I have, Carol, kind of spells, I think, probably where you're going with this is absent a funding source, I were, I don't know where these monies come from. So I will be more comfortable with a statement that says, using uh potential increases in revenues, funding at these levels, that would satisfy my concern because right now, you got to cut it from somewhere and we haven't identified. Um, and I know you, you attempted to identify some cuts earlier, but they weren't related to these two. So I would say that that is my major concern with this is that there's no revenue identified, but recognizing that absent cuts, it's going to rely on revenue increases to make these reality.
I I would be comfortable saying, uh, if the revenue increases are available or so.
All right, so you'll take a friendly amendment for both of these and say, um, using any potential increases in revenue increase blank.
Yeah, and I guess I'll send my motion for the one and then because we're talking about them both, just we, we can vote them.
Vote them together, okay.
Once, yeah, thank you.
All right, so uh, so just so we're clear, both of them will be taken together and and Councilmember Betts has just moved these amended ones, which say um utilizing potential increases in revenue, increase general fund contribution to both of those priorities to get up to those funding levels. Um, so now I will call on, oh, Councilmember Dunbar, you're leaning with your hand up.
I would just like to point out that in any of the other spots that we talked about, other than the proposal to particular departments to reallocate, we are not proposing where this money comes from. Um, we've adopted new social workers, but don't know where that's coming from.
I would draw my friendly amendment if that makes you feel better.
I like your friendly amendment.
Okay.
I think it's all good, but I also think that that, that, that it underscores the reason why we are proposing specific financial cuts in the police department is to make available the resources to do many of the other things that provide community service uh related to that. So I am not, I'm, I'm just pointing it out for.
Well, and Councilmember, Councilmember Dunbar, you know, one of my top priorities is ensuring that our fund balance is back to 12% and we haven't done anything on that this time around. So um, I I hear you. Um, so we'll keep those dollar amounts in and use the, the revenue language that we, we agreed on. Councilmember Betts, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for amending that. And thank you for the comment, Kathy. I I was noticing that as well.
And I didn't think of it, so I apologize, but I will call on Council Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, this will be uh very brief. I appreciate um Councilman Betts for bringing this forward. Um, I also appreciate the Public Service Board. I think the, you know, the critical piece here is the signal, you know, with this last part of both of these items with the priority placed on underserved areas. Um, I know a number of us have been kicking and screaming for that. I think this is a more appropriate way um to signal to the administration uh that this needs to be a priority. When you look at, and and I know that I I hear from a number of my constituents, um, you know, from all across my ward. My ward is very um unique in that, I mean, it really spans the spectrum. You talk about socioeconomic realities. Um, and I hear from a number of um individuals from neighborhoods that, you know, could be considered more affluent, that their roads are um, you know, in in disrepair as well. But the reality is when you look at our roads and the fact that some 72% are in poor condition, um, you, I mean, every underserved area is in poor condition. Um, and the 28% that are not are typically, um, again, if you look at our Pacer rating map um on the city's website, um, those are in more affluent areas. So when we look at um repair, when we look at replacement, uh, and those types of things, um, I think it's part science and I think it's part political. So um, I really appreciate that aspect. So again, I I appreciate um Public Service Board uh as well as uh Councilmember Betts for bringing this forward and I will be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, in the interest of the fact that it's now an hour and a half since the last, the next meeting is supposed to start, I'm going to ask that we um vote on this and Sherry, please call the roll.
Well, this would be on three and four together, correct?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
All right, so let me just really quick, okay. So what I'm asking you all to now do is approve the amended resolution, which includes um there'll be now items one through three on the committee of the whole, which are. there'll be now items one through three on the Committee of the Whole, which are hire FTE for housing and legal assistance, increase general fund sidewalks, increase local street repairs. Uh, for the Committee on Development and Planning, it is going to be, um, Sherry, you're gonna have to do that one, because I didn't take copious notes on that one.
Um, de- development and planning, eighty thousand dollars for one FTE Financial Empowerment Employee to focus on small business, minority business, female-owned business, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for reactivation of the facade improvement grant program, fifty thousand dollars for an analysis of the facade improvement grant program, including the return on equity report from previous facade grants, forty thousand dollars in initiative to initiate an RFP for engagement of stakeholders and completion of community facilities plan, um, and the LEAP subsidy of five hundred thousand dollars, taking those funds to four hundred thousand at five FTE Economic Development or Economic Role previously done by LADC LEAP, fifty thousand dollars for the facade improvement grant program, and fifty thousand dollars for an analysis of the facade improvement grant program.
Great, um, okay, and then for the Committee on Equity Diversity and Inclusion, it is five hundred thousand dollars to hire four full-time, f- full-time social workers and one FTE Administrative Assistant in the Fire Department. Is that right? Did we agree to the Fire Department?
Correct.
Yes, okay, and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for one FTE for a grant writer, either in the Neighborhood Citizen Engagement or HRCS Department. Uh, further on the Committee on General Services, five thousand dollars on training modules, ten thousand dollars to print out the materials to accompany said training modules. Nope, costs to provide written materials to residents who do not have access to computers and our cell phones with documented capability separate issues, but the same committee, my bad. Uh, Committee on Public Safety, uh, eleven thousand for speed wagons, ten thousand for portable speed bumps, a hundred and forty thousand for the LFD Apprenticeship Cadet Program. And all of these, we've, with the understanding that it is our desire that the administration invests new revenues in operations slowdown, um, for the first two. The nuance of that eleven and ten thousand, we obviously understand is, depends on the costs and on that. Uh, Committee on Public Service did not have anything. Committee on Ways and Means had encouraged the administration to focus in on budget allocations and centralize the fees and costs associated with items such as IT utilities, et cetera, and encouraged the CSO to perform an audit report on short and long-term resolutions for the current forecast of the city's revenues and expenditures within all departments, followed by the four priority statements that went unamended. So I will ask Vice President Hussein for a motion on that, uh, substitute, um, amendment, or substitute resolution. Been moved by Councilmember Hussein, uh, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, so is this the final one, or?
Yes.
Okay, so, I got a couple of things, Mr. Pass- President, I know you love to hate me for this, um, because I was thinking.
I don't hate anybody.
But you're gonna love to hate me, because I know you wanna.
But you might be trying that philosophy this evening.
So, um, I don't know if now is a good time, or if you wanna.
Well, it's, it's, it's a speak now or forever hold your peace kind of moment, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, so I first want to apologize for not bringing the, any of these two ideas to, um, council ahead of time. I literally have been thinking about it, trying to think, because we're in this pandemic, I know that the budget's affected, I know that there's cuts. I know that, you know, some of, only some of the most important things has a chance, so what can I do, what can I do? Um, so one thing I'm thinking about is like, what is the best way? When we hear the, the, the calls for investment in the community, you hear the calls from Black Lives Matter, et cetera, that we want investment in the community, what can we do, what's ideas? Everybody wants to know what some ideas are, so I'm kind of thinking about the best way to mo- to make people upwardly mobile. And when you look at different zip codes, there's basically your chances of success largely or partially depend on where you're born, where you live, because, um, there's concentrated poverty, there's years of segregation that created different disinvestment and programs leaving and everything and everything, schools, everything. So there's a lot of young people out there that for one reason or the other, and I, I could bet they're concentrated in certain zip codes in areas that don't have a high school diploma. Some people, um, you know, had to work, or some people had homeless parents, or some people has parents who were on drugs, and for whatever reason, they didn't graduate. Other people have got caught up in the criminal justice system, maybe it's been a target of overpolicing, maybe, um, did something when they were younger and did time, or ultimately got kicked out of school. We know about the school-to-prison pipeline is a real thing, so there's a lot of people out here that don't have high school diplomas or the equivalent. And I have a few friends in the, um, um, in the different systems, and basically a juvenile probation officer tells me that there's not a lot of places for GED, uh, preparation and classes and, um, workshops in Lansing, and that they have to send Lansing kids to Potterville to do it. So I'm thinking, you know, people can't even get jobs unless they have a GED. So if we can get a lot of our Lansing people who don't have high school diplomas or GEDs, get them the GED, we give those people probably the best single thing we can do for them at that time. And these people are likely at, near the bottom of the socioeconomic panel, because if you don't have a high school diploma and you don't have a job, you're not gonna be productive for the most part. So I'm, I'm proposing, and I hope that council will s- think it's a good idea, to invest money. Um, I didn't have the exact numbers, but if we had to put a number today and where it would come from, I would say invest a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from where the police budget is a good start. Um, because I think that in the long run, if we keep getting people with high school diplomas or the equivalent, they'll have jobs, they'll be less likely to even have to come in contact with law enforcement in the future because they work, they don't have to rely on, um, on, um, hustles or any type of ways to get money and respect, because they'll have a legitimate means, employment, one of the most stable things that people can have to prevent them from committing crimes. So if we could make it a priority to, um, make a GED program. Now, the details could vary, if we could have, we could hire or contract, um, an instructor that does the classes, because GEDs, you could just take the test and pay the money over and over again until you pass it. But really, people need, um, the program, the works, the workshop, the practice quizzes, and then ultimately a test, to pay for the test, a retest, a retest, if you need it. But we could use existing programs, which I don't think there's that many around here, but boost those up or make it, or pay for Lansing residents if we can. Um, we could go to the different community centers like the Boys and Girls Club, that's in one of those zip codes nearby, uh, that could probably use attention, and let's just boost it up, let's try to get people in. So I would propose that one as number one. Um, and number two, just kind of going on, what can we do? We don't have that much money, we have a pandemic, there's different calls, police reform is important. So I think that we all agree, everybody on council agrees that we don't like any bad actors in the police department, I think that's unanimous. Um, and we also agree that people should be held accountable, if there's anything, that's unanimous. Um, and I would argue to anybody that people are not aware, citizens are not really aware of our, how to file a complaint with the police department. Um, they just really don't know how, and it would take someone to look it up, figure it out, and follow through, which, you know, you go online, you might find all types of different things. So, um, one thing that I would propose is that for the business cards of the LPD, they handed out, that they hand out on the back, it's just like how to file a complaint. And the language can vary, but I think the numbers should be to the independent investigator, because that's the process we have now, to the, um, Lansing Police Commission people, because that's the process we have now. I would also say to the human, um, resource, excuse me, the human rights ordinance process number, but I would probably leave out the Internal Affairs, the LPD Internal Affairs, just because that would probably discourage.
Councilmember Jackson, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this feels more like a stream of consciousness than amendment to our budget resolution. Would you please, i- I, I, could you draft something in writing and have, we can still amend the resolution on the floor, but I, I would much prefer to have this put in writing as, as the committees and Councilmember Betts did for us, so that we know exactly what it is we're voting on.
Well, yeah, so it's gonna be extra printing costs to put on both sides.
Right, if you could draft that up and send it out, we'll have Sherry send it to the committee, and I'll screen share it when we have it in front of us for the final adoption of the resolution. That would be, I think, out of respect for our time and the process that was laid out a few weeks ago.
Okay, um, I mean, you are the president, but no offense, I mean, I'm taking less than five minutes out of everybody's time.
I know that you're taking less than five minutes, but I am taking offense by the fact that there was a process clearly that out, and this, this process that you're trying to circumvent demonstrates a lack of respect for everyone else's ability to stick to it. And I'm, I'm sorry to come off so strong, but this has been a very long meeting that was, had a lot of productive conversation. And I know that council, every committee member on this committee, or on this council, did a lot of work to put these budget priorities together. Councilmember Betts spent a lot of time on his to present to us in writing, so that they were here in time. And right now, this feels more like a stream of consciousness than an actual amendment to the resolution, and I'm sorry if that's harsh, but I, I, out of respect for everybody else who, who did this, I would ask that you, uh, please do that, and we can, we can certainly entertain it at council. We have a little bit of time before that will be entered, will be, um, a final vote on the council floor. And I would ask that you do that then, I apologize for, for cutting you off.
Well, I mean, apology not quite accepted, only because this is scheduled today on the docket, and.
And it's been scheduled for about a month and a half.
You preferred, you know, it in writing, so it's, if there's any questions, I guess I can answer it for anybody, but I was just trying to explain the rationale, um, behind the budget priority that I chose. One of the two that I just submitted today, on the day of the agenda.
Thank you. All right, Sherry, if you could please call the roll on the, um, if you could please call the roll on the, um, amended amendment, I'm sorry, the amended resolution that's been, uh, presented.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
I'm confused, so are we voting without my two?
That's correct.
No.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven-one.
Motion carries seven-one, that'll be up for final consideration this evening on the council meeting when we do eventually start that. The next item is in an ordinance to amend the property tax exemption guidelines. We have heard this a number of times, this is just, uh, pu- I'm sorry, Council, Vice President Hussein.
Oh, go for it.
Okay, we have heard this a number of times, it is just, uh, it's aligning our law, our ordinance to, uh, state law when it comes to principal residence, uh, exemption. If anyone has other questions, though, um, I will, um, ask them that they be answered by one of the city's attorneys on the phone or on the call. Um, but we have, uh, seen this a couple of times, this is just, it's come back to this committee after the public hearing. So, uh, Vice President Hussein, if you'd like to move it, um, and then we'll open it up to discussion.
I would move the ordinance.
Thank you, it's been moved, is there discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, Sherry, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you very much. Um, so that is all that's left on the agenda. Folks, we are gonna take a six-minute break, and we will call this meeting back to order at, I'm, I'm sorry, we will reconvene for the Lansing City Council meeting at eight-fifty PM. Uh, thank you all for your time this evening.